We call this meeting to order. This is the November sixteenth regularly scheduled meeting of the Hoyoke City Council. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Greeney?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Leahy?
I'm present.
Lebron Martinez? Here. Lisi?
Here.
McGee? McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. A little bit of housekeeping.
And the city council.
Amen. A little bit of housekeeping too. Our president, excuse me, our president Todd McGee will not be with us this evening. He's traveling home from a family vacation. The charter is very clear. The senior member, not the oldest member, the senior member opens up the meeting. It is up to the body to decide who they wish to run the meeting.
I make the motion to have Joe McGivern serve in this meeting.
A second. Motion made and seconded to volunteer Joe McGivern to run the meeting this evening. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We are being, we are on TV live. We are being recorded. We are being streamed and we are Zoom also. So that's just something that we should announce and do announce at every meeting. Before we get down to order, we have a very, a number of special guests with us this evening on an order that was unanimously adopted by the city council introduced by Councilor Bartley and Councilor Tomlin at the time that we recognize and give proclamation for the memorial of the B-17 event that took place in Hoyoke so many years ago. I would ask Councilor Bartley and Councilor Tomlin to bring our guests in.
Thanks so much for, for being here. Congratulations, everybody, and thanks for your attention. And thank you to the acting president Joseph McGivern as well. A few short months ago, Councilor Tomlin and myself along with a friend Mark Chetel, who ran for city council this year, we were hiking down Mount Tom after attending the 75th anniversary of the B-17 memorial. And Pete and I said, it was my first time there, it was Pete's first time there, it was Mark's, I think, 50th time there because he's a hiker and actually in shape as opposed to me, he was not in shape. And, and so we were, we were just so blown away by it. And, and we said to ourselves, and I said with Councilor Tomlin's, and I'm going to introduce Pete in a second, Councilor Tomlin's acquiescence along with Councilor Greeney and Councilor Sullivan who co filed, and yes, Joe unanimously supported, we said we have to do something to recognize this committee and for the great work that the women and men have done for this, to keep this thing going and to make it such a prominent part of the city of Hoyoke. Seventy-fifth anniversary was July, July this year, July 10th if I remember right, but Rick will correct me if I'm wrong, of the tragic crash in 1946 with our heroes coming back from, from overseas service. And when, when Pete and I were walking down, we said to ourselves, you know, when, when, when can we have this presented? And, and Pete and I talked it out and we said Veterans Day seemed most appropriate and approximate to Veterans Day. So that's why we're here. So this, this happened 75 years ago, July 1946, and here we are just a few short days after Veterans Day where several of us attended a, you know, again, another moving service at the war memorial. And so we want to do our small part to recognize, of course, our heroes. So speaking of which, I'm going to introduce one of our, our, our service members, service members, Peter Tomlin, to say a few remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and I really want, really grateful and humbled to be up here tonight to introduce this committee. It was the first time I was at this memorial and I know it's the 25th anniversary and 75 years of, of the crash up there. But the, the people that, that crashed into that mountain, you know, the lives, the young lives, most of them, you know, young 17, 18, 20-year-olds that gave their lives, you know, coming back from the war over in Europe. And to, for this committee to memorialize that year after year is really important and really a tribute to the, to the, all veterans, all veterans that have served our country and that are still serving now and the future veterans. It's really an honor to introduce somebody that's part of this committee and I want to thank all the members that are here tonight, that have given their time to keep up this monument in this, on, on the mountain up there in Mount Tom and to remember, you know, the lives that have been given through their, their sacrifice. And tonight I want to introduce Rick Lee, who was a part of that committee over the years, and he can introduce the other members of the committee. And I'm really grateful and anybody that doesn't get a chance to try to get up there and to see that monument, it was really a touching ceremony that they have every year. So, okay. So this is the resolution from the city council. It'll be resolved that the Hoyoke City Council extends its congratulations to the Mount Tom B-17 Memorial Committee, the 17th, 75th anniversary of the 1946 crash and the 25th anniversary of the lasting monument honoring those lost. And it be further resolved that the Hoyoke City Council extends its best wishes for continued success. That this resolution be duly signed by the president of the city council and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the city of Hoyoke, signed by Todd McGee, the president, Brenna Murphy McGee, the city clerk, August 3rd, 2021.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mr. President. Dave and Peter, thank you so much. And I really, really want to introduce the members of the committee who are with us here tonight. I'll go start over here with Bud Schuback, who is our committee's official photographer, among other things, Deb Malik, and our committee chair, the center of the wheel, Jesus Pereira, who keeps us together and keeps us moving forward, Brian Farrell, who hikes to the top of the mountain more times than the rest of us do to keep that site looking good, and John Borowski, one of our long stalwart members who has come to our aid every time we've had a problem that needs his help. And there's one other person I really want to thank among all the other members of the committee, and that's a man who isn't here tonight, who is no longer with us. His name is Norman Cody. He's a Hoyoker. He hiked that mountain and saw this caron of rocks up there and wondered, what is this all about? He saw a little card. Some hiker had kindly put a little encapsulation of the story there. And Norman went right to the veterans officer in North Hampton, he would have found you if you had been around at that time, and said, this isn't right. These young men gave their lives serving our country. They served in Greenland. And you may think that's an out-of-the-way kind of job in the Second World War. In point of fact, there was a gap in the Atlantic Ocean, the North Atlantic, between the radar range of the Brits and the Americans where the U-boat Wolf Pack ran, taking out shipping and killing thousands or hundreds of people, if not thousands. The Greenland radar station was there to put an eye on that and get American forces, naval forces in to stop the Wolf Pack. In fact, they were so important that Nazi army officers and soldiers assaulted Greenland to try to get them taken out of action. So it was not a peach assignment. It was tough. They spent that time, survived the Second World War, flew home within sight of Westover Field in our city, and they hit that mountain. And they died in a violent crash that could be seen from the street in front of city council, city council chambers here. That's how bad it was. Twenty-five young men. And Norm Cody said, it just isn't right that they haven't been recognized. People have said to me, well, you know, you're around Westover Field, there's a lot of plane crashes around here. Not like this one. Not like these young men. And the impact that it made on their families was profound and not good. Twenty-five years ago, when this monument was put in place, Norman came, one good man, and bugged the living daylights out of the veterans agent in North Hampton, who then called me and called, everybody else here got their phone calls, right? In the time I've spent with the Red Cross, I've been in a lot of committee meetings, more than I ever want to in, in my future. This is one committee that I look forward to because no one brings personal agendas to the table, right, folks? They are there voluntarily because they love this mission and this story. And this is a Hoyoke story, a uniquely Hoyoke story. This is a treasure on the side of Mount Tom, memorializing not only the sacrifice of these 25 young men. Imagine what they were thinking about coming home, right? Seeing their wives, girlfriends, mothers, eating in their favorite restaurant, seeing their buddies, getting back together. None of that happened for them. They gave the ultimate sacrifice and we recognize them every year on the 6th of July, or in this case, the 10th, which was the closest Saturday, in order not only to recognize them, but to recognize other people who are serving us today in our military. They don't get enough thanks. So I appreciate this for a lot of reasons, for our committee, I know they all feel this way, that this is something that Hoyoke should embrace going forward. It's a part of our history, started by one good Hoyoker and carried on by these good people and others. Thank you very much.
members of the commission. If we could have a motion to suspend rules and go to item number 25?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to take up item number 25, was introduced by our, by our president in anticipation of this evening. Order that the city council invite any and all the newly elected councilor elects into the chamber as is tradition. On that motion, take off the table, all those in favor.
Aye.
Tradition is, we typically during the, the last meeting in November and the couple meetings in December, whenever a newly elected official comes in, to invite them to join us in the chambers. And I think that's the spirit of this order this evening. We do understand that there is COVID protocol. We do have some, you know, steps that have been taken in this room. It's not as easy as we were anticipating. We do have a couple of empty seats. We have a couple of empty seats on the side over here and, you know, if people are in the middle of the chambers, you know, we have empty seats too, if anybody feels comfortable. The purpose of asking each of you to come in is, is to allow you not to debate, by no means, because you're not sworn in yet, and it's only this body that's going to be allowed to debate except for suspension of rules, but to allow to ask procedural questions and to get a feel for what it's like inside the swinging gate. There's a saying that many people who come through that gate for the first time and, and participate in the first meeting, they didn't understand what it was like inside that gate. And that gives you an idea of what we know you're capable of, of what you're in for. So with us this evening, forgive the, not the oldest city council, er, but with us in the audience, we do have, and we won't call them new, a returning city councilor, Kevin Jordan, Ward Four Cocaine Givner, At Large Elect Israel Rivera, Jenny Rivera, not this evening, Tessa Murphy Ramboletti, Will Pulo, did I say that right?
Yeah.
I did good. Ward Two.
Yeah.
And Jose Mountainado Velez. Okay? You're all welcome. There's no right or wrong if you want to come in, if you want to come in for a little bit. You don't have to stay the entire meeting, but it does give you a chance to, if there's someplace you feel comfortable. My seat will be open for the evening. I think Council Lisi's seat will be open and...
I got one here, extra seat.
And there'll be one if Council Tomlin and Council Sullivan are comfortable, one over there. And then in the corners over here, there's a couple too. Excuse me one second. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Grab a seat.
Easy.
Grab a seat right here. Oh, oh, yes, okay. Wherever you want to sit, yeah. Sounds good.
It's two.
Thank you.
It's two right there. How you doing? Nice to see you.
Congratulations. Thank you. I just got to see it through now.
Yeah, right. That's the key, right? See it through, right?
Yeah, I just got to see it through now.
We tell them about the cookies and the donuts?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Go please.
Mr. President, can we take number one off the table, please?
Second.
Second.
Number one comes under, laid on the table from our last meeting, is the Committee on Development and Governmental Relations to whom was referred an order, license agreement between the city of Hoyoke and Edward A. Owen recommend that this order be adopted. The motion is to take off the table. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Councilor Bartley?
Mr. President, I'd like to refer this back to DGR, if I could take a second.
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 All right. And then just for the purposes, I did speak with the petitioner, Mr. President, and I did speak with the administrative assistant. We will have a DGR on December 1st and we will have...
Who?
Sorry.
Fumble.
Rookie mistake. We will have, I spoke to the petitioner prior to this meeting and we will put this issue on our December 1st agenda, at the top of the agenda, right after we approve the meeting minutes. So everybody's on board with that, then I'll, we'll just refer a copy of this back to DGR and the law department and we'll have, we'll have a more in-depth discussion, DGR.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? On a motion then to refer back to committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Mr. President, can we take number two off the table, please?
Second. Motion made and seconded to remove item two off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? From the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order, a petition from residents of Michigan Avenue for speed humps, speed bumps recommend that this order be adopted. Council Bartley?
Well, I think I'd like to...
Review the committee report and adopt.
Council Lisi.
Pass the first reading. Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded by our chair of the ordinance committee, Council Lisi, who is with us by Zoom. On that motion, is there any discussion? Council Lisi, for the committee report.
I just want to make sure you heard that it's a motion to pass the first reading at this point?
I did.
Okay, great. So, you know, it's filed by Council Bartley and we have heard that there's a lot of traffic issues on Michigan Avenue and our city engineer took a look and the traffic counts and speeds in the area do merit some sort of intervention. And so the neighborhood, at the engineer's request, went out and got the signatures needed to put speed humps in the area. And I believe that we'll have, is it two or three speed humps? I'm sorry, I don't have it here in my notes.
Two.
Two. Yeah. Two speed humps on Michigan Avenue. It had a lot of support from the neighborhood. And anything else, I would defer to the maker of the order.
Council Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We'll be ever so brief. So we had a, as we were reminded last night in Finance Committee, the, the temporary speed humps, and this is probably pretty good for, for new counselors too, who want to get constituent requests, the, the temporary speed humps showed a tremendous reduction in, in speed and in volume, as the city engineer reminded us last night, Mr. President, while you were chairing Finance. And the neighborhood is to be commended because there was, as you know, it's a bit of an onerous task to get all the signatures, et cetera, but I think everybody in the, in the whole neighborhood, the whole street, and Michigan Avenue is not a, you know, it's a long street. So there was unanimous approval and from, from what we've, what we heard in public hearings, what I've heard anecdotally, is that the residents on that thoroughfare are thoroughly on board with this. And so we need to thank them. We also need to send our specific thanks to the acting mayor, former acting mayor, who, who we noted last night was, not only did he come up, visit the neighborhood, visit the sites for that and for other, other items that are going to come before us, but last night we were, if we pass it tonight, we'll be able to, through a bond mechanism, we'll be able to pay the $20,000 because speed humps are $10,000 apiece, as it turns out. We will be able to pay for the installation of the speed humps. So with that, I'll, I'll yield the floor, but I just want to thank everybody in anticipation of their support.
Is there any further discussion? The motion on the floor is I would pass its first reading. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Motion to pass a second reading?
Motion has been made and seconded to pass its second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made and seconded to pass it be ordained. There's no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the speed bumps on Michigan Avenue. If you vote no, you are voting against them.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've adopted the order.
Motion to pick up item number three off the table?
Motion has been made and seconded to remove item number three from the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. This was from the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that section 4.6.3.2 be amended to allow for increased fence heights by special permit, recommend that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive the committee report, adopt and pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to receive the committee report to adopt passing this, passing the second reading. Council Lisi, committee report?
Thank you. So here we have a number of businesses in the city that are looking to create fences that are higher than what our previous ordinance allowed for. Previously, it was up to six feet and then up to eight, sorry, up to eight, sorry, up to six feet by right and then up to eight feet by special permit. And so we decided not to put a cap on the, the fence height limit by special permit and just to leave it open. So after, after six feet by right, there is no max by special permit. It's as the situation calls for.
Is there any discussion? On the motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass second reading?
Motion made and seconded to pass the second reading. Is there any discussion? If not, on that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made and seconded to pass it be ordained. There's no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the amendment and the creation of the special permit. If you vote no, you are voting against it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've adopted the amended ordinance. Item number four?
Item number four off the table, please.
Make a motion made and seconded to take item four off the table. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. From the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the city council, through the appropriate committee, consider drop and pick for two parking spots for the van that will pick up and drop off participants that attend the V Care Adult at the address of 20210 High Street. The program serves a population of 60 and older and is necessary to assure their safety enclosed. A letter of company request recommend that the order be adopted.
A motion to receive the committee report, pass the first reading.
Motion made and seconded to receive the committee report to pass the first reading.
Question, Mr. President.
Committee report first by Council Lisi and then Council Murphy.
Thank you. So this order is filed by Council Lebron Martinez at the request of the V Care Adult Daycare Program that is located at 200-210 High Street. They have a number of participants that have limited mobility issues and so they have requested a pickup and drop-off area in front of their business so that they could get their attendees in and out safely. And through the discussion, what we decided to do was instead of eliminating two parking spots, we simply created the ability to have one space where there was going to be no parking for a limited number of hours. So it's one hour in the morning, 8:30 to 9:30 a.m., and 2:30 to 3:30 p.m. So with the no parking in that one space for those two hours, it allows the daycare van to get in, drop off their attendant safely in the morning, and then pick them up and bring them away from the program in the afternoon.
Council Murphy?
No. The chair just answered my question because I did not have a copy of the actual ordinance. So I appreciate the fact that it's one spot and it's in those hours, but I hadn't had a copy of it, so I just wanted to make sure that's what it was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, the motion on the floor is to adopt the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass second reading?
Motion made and seconded to pass the second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made and seconded to pass it be ordained. If there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of creating the one spot. If you vote no, you are voting against it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Greeney?
Yes.
Anyas?
Tunes.
By your vote, you've adopted the ordinance.
Thank you.
Item number five off the table, please.
Motion made and seconded to remove item number five off the table. Committee on Ord, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. The Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order updating the Hoyoke ordinances of use, defining restaurants adding to section two under appendix A, a restaurant or business establishment where meals or refreshments may be purchased. Restaurant sit-down of building portion therefore containing tables, indoor booths and at least two-thirds of the legal capacity which is designed to intend and use for the indoor sales and consumption of food prepared on the premises, except that the food may be consumed outdoors in landscaped terraces designed for dining purposes which injuncts the main indoor restaurant facility. The term restaurant sit-in, sit-down shall not include fast food establishments, but may also include drive-in or take-out or food delivery services. Also, a restaurant, drive-in or take-out, premises and buildings for the safe dispensing or serving of food refreshments or beverages for consumption of vehicles temporarily parked on the premises or tables, benches, counters, and the like of majority of which are all, which are outdoors or for the consumption off premises may also offer drive in, take out, and food delivery services. The recommendation of the committees that this order be adopted.
Motion to pass the first reading.
Motion made second to pass the first reading. The committee report, Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. So this is a really simple amendment to our restaurant ordinance. Previously, restaurant was defined only by either sit down or drive in, take out, and there was no basic definition of restaurant. And by defining restaurant alone as a business establishment where meals or refreshments may be purchased, it allows for more businesses to do restaurant service in a variety of ways. This was filed by Counsel Murphy, I believe. So if there's anything to add there, he's welcome to add to it. But really, it's a simple amendment to the restaurant ordinance that just simply defines restaurant alone as opposed to consolidating all the definitions together.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, thank you. And oh, this was an attempt to try to make sure that businesses that are trying to do some of these things. We had a, at the old railroad station was trying to open up an ice cream shop, and they couldn't get it because they weren't classified as a restaurant. And we finally ended up getting it in a roundabout way, and this was the recommendation. So that future businesses that want to open up do not have so much red tape to go through. So, and that was just an ice cream shop. But I appreciate the committee. I know this came from the office of planning and economic development as a solution to that problem for the future. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And item number six off the table. Oh, sorry. It's motion to pass second reading.
Second.
Motion made second to pass the second reading. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made second to pass it be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the new ordinance. If you vote no, you are voting against it.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Grainey.
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've adopted the amended ordinance. Item number six.
Motion to take six off the table, please.
Motion made second to take six off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Also from the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order, referred an order zone change application of Ivan Trozuski. Trozukki. Trozki. It's been a while.
Troshishi.
Thank you. To change an RA to an RO at four oh five Ingleside Street to rezone the matter consistent with the development patterns in the area, the committee recommends it be adopted.
Motion to receive the committee report and adopt, pass the first reading.
Motion made second to receive the committee report, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor Lisi, the committee report.
Thank you. So this is a zone change request from RA, which is agricultural residential, to RO, which is a residential office space at four oh five Ingleside Street. Really, the RO zone is contiguous to other parcels in the area. So there's no spot zone concerns. What this applicant wants to do with the site, which doesn't necessarily pertain to the consideration of the zone change technically, but it's nice to know so that it helps us in making a decision to understand how the parcel would be used, is that there are going to be a call center for medical appointments that could also provide transportation appointment. So there won't be more than three employees. And the, there will be a rental unit that the owner, Mr. Troshie, will be keeping on top. They basically will just have those three employees' cars on the site and otherwise people, they serve as a middleman between people making appointments with different medical facilities. And as I had mentioned before, if there is a need to arrange for pickup or drop off or transportation in some way, this company would be able to arrange that, but they're not providing that service themselves.
Is there any further discussion? If not, the motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made second that the report pass its second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made second to pass it be ordained. No further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the zone change. If you vote no, you are voting against it.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Grainey.
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've adopted the zone change. That was an unusual amount of items laid on the table. One of the main reasons that we had to lay down this table at our last meeting was before we pass anything that amends or changes our ordinances, it has to be in legal form. And we waited till this evening to have legal form. Each of those were in legal form as we took the votes this evening. Thank you. The next part of our meeting is what we know as public comment. Public comment is something that we adopted several years ago. It works out very well where we all, members of the audience, if signed up before, to come forward and to speak and to share thoughts on what may be on the agenda this evening is the primary purpose of it. We have five individuals who have signed up for public comment this evening. Therefore, we can go with the minute and a half venue. We ask each of you, when you come forward, to state your name and address, to limit your speaking to a minute and a half, and we'll do our best to accommodate whatever the point that you're trying to get across. Our first speaker is John Borowski, thirty Driscoll Lane.
John Mark.
It was.
Okay, one down. Our second speaker is, I believe, Edwin. Edward. Edwenship does count, folks. Oh, it's twenty front street?
Ed.
Ed.
I'm off that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming down. Our third speaker, Kevin Jordan.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here to speak to you this evening. By the way, Kevin Jordan, eighteen Raymond Avenue. I'm here to speak to you regarding a matter that's on before the council this evening. And my comments are as follows. I'm very disappointed to see an attempt to weaken our ethics ordinance in an attempt to allow the city council to fall into the shameless sideshow of self indulgence at the public trough. It's an act of public corruption that should be given leave to withdraw. Since eighteen ninety-six, by vote of the public of Hoyoke in section twenty-three of our charter, that is, no counselor shall have the expenditure of any money appropriated by the city council. And recodified in two thousand seventeen by an eleven to four vote of this council, no counselor may simultaneously be employed by the city. Hoyoke, like many other cities cited by the law department in their well-written legal opinion recently, has stood for the proposition that the city council and its members should put the city's interests above their own and be completely independent of outside influence as they carry on the people's business. I loathe the day when the city council would ever allow one of its members to serve as a city employee. Firstly, you cannot be independent of the mayor and the departments we are charged to oversee while also drawing a salary from them. In this year's election, every candidate knew or should have known these longstanding ethics rules. Running for the council is a voluntary act. You don't get to change the rules after the game is over in order to feather one's own nest. People have a choice. Work for the city or be a city counselor, but you don't get to do both. This current effort to change our rules is disgraceful and only invites more and more people to become counselors and collect much larger salaries in the administration. Jobs could easily be offered to candidates before or after the election as a form of bribery. Isn't that what we are talking about here? Exchanging compensation and jobs for political influence on the council? If that isn't what's going on, then why would we ever want to invite that? This sacred institution to which the public counts on is a council free of these types of conflicts and entanglements. I implore the council to hold itself to the highest standards of our ethics laws because these rules are much bigger than us. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Press Macy, seventy-two Shamet Ave.
Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to speak. I'm Press Macy. I live at seventy-two Shamet. And as Kevin outlined, there is a consideration being given to having the city charter regarding the separation of employment with being also a city counselor abrogated so that a person can offer both positions. Recently, I was the chairman of a political action committee, and I also ran for office. And I learned that I couldn't be the chairman of a political action committee and also run for office. So I stepped down as the chairman, and I did what the law asked me to do. I think that the same consideration here is that a person can have a choice. They happen perhaps to know it ahead of time, and if not, they can choose. I think that the one choice is to step down from the job, the other is to step away from the office. And then there's probably some thinking about a third way. And I think that a third way is to step away from the city charter, from the law, and from the method that we've chosen to govern ourselves. And I don't think the third way really leads to a good outcome in the long run. It might be, and I enjoy the individual who is in this position. He's a great person, but the position is not the person. The position is the position. And I think that the city council should not take this recommendation and allow this change to be made at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the chambers, our final speaker signed up is Jose Gonzalez, two forty-five Walnut Street.
Hello. I think it's a, I think it would be reasonable for us to consider that some of our, some of the rules that we've been following up until this point are archaic. And asking a person to give up their finances so they could represent their district and city council is also a little bit ridiculous and archaic. So I think that it would be reasonable and wise to like go forward and see like, if there's a conflict of interest that arises, we're not stupid. We're all adults. We can see it. We can call it out, and we can take it from there. And I think that's all, that's all I'm going to say about that. And also, in terms of changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, you very commonly refer to us as Puerto Ricans, but we more commonly refer to ourselves as Boricua or Taínó. And we have indigenous ancestry along, as well as African ancestry, also mixed with colonizers from Spain and Portugal. But that doesn't make us any less indigenous. So I think that even, all politics aside, Columbus historically sold indigenous children into sex slavery. He sold us into slavery. He murdered us after we saved them when they were drowning. So if that's the kind of day that you want to keep having, if that's really the thing that really ties you to your values, I don't, I don't know what to say to you, right? But that guy sold children into sex slavery and murdered us, right? And when you have over half of your population that shares indigenous ancestry, I think that the least you can do is give them their day and dismiss the day of genocide that has been celebrated up until now. I think that the entry level, you know, reparation fee is to at least change that name so that we can raise some awareness, so that we can honor over half the population in this town in a way that's decent. Because to continue to celebrate Columbus Day when we know that what they did to us was inhumane is, you know, you know, that those aren't values that I hold, and I hope that none of you hold them either. So thank you. Good health to you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jose. And the chair just wants to recognize how President McGee keeps this stopwatch going. I have no idea. Mr. President? We, if I could, Counselor Leahy, we do have on Zoom two hands up. If we can just check them.
Sure.
And then we'll be done with public comment. Okay, Steve Rosenbusch. Our administrative assistant will let you in. And Steve, I think you heard the rules. You have a minute and a half, but please give us your.
Yes, no, I know the rules. Thank you. It's Steve Rosenbusch, eleven fifty-five North Hampton Street, also called Dogwood Estate. I'll try to be brief. It's hard, it's going to be hard to follow the speakers before me. I just wanted to say, in case people did not know it, that one of the many hats I've worn in my professional career over the long, the long years is I was a professional researcher and planner, and I happened to notice just about two or three weeks ago that there has been a precipitous decline of nearly two thousand people in the census estimate of Hoyoke's population. And let me just give you two numbers. That the census was projecting a small increase over a nine-year period from two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen of about point six percent. And then suddenly, a few months later, they did an actual count during the pandemic. And instead of having a population of slightly more than forty thousand, they're now saying our population is nearly two thousand people less. Now, what I think has happened is the following. The real estate agents that I had talked to said there is a housing shortage. And in fact, the housing shortage starts from, I'm sorry, starts at Amherst. And graduate students can't find housing even until they go down to Hartford. So what I think has happened during the pandemic are two things. One, I think many, during the pandemic, as the local colleges closed, many college students returned home elsewhere but kept on to their apartments because they knew their apartments would be hard to replace. So that, and those, but those college students have come back now and are among us.
Steve, if you could start to wrap up, please.
Yes. The other, the other source of undercount is the apartment houses. But I think the census enumerators were afraid to go into the apartment houses and knock on doors. And since the census count affects our reimbursement for, from the federal government for highway funds and things of that nature, I think, I don't know which, which department it falls into.
Steve, thank you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Elizabeth Ramirez from Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And could we have your address, please, Elizabeth?
Two oh five Bemis Road. And I would like to speak on two agenda items. The first one is also Indigenous Peoples' Day. I agree with the last speaker who spoke on this. I think the city of Hoyoke has overwhelmingly shown support for celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. And I, I wonder if, this is the third time we've met at city council, and I wonder if some councilors are trying to beat this on technicalities because they can't beat it on the merit of the issue, which was expressed very well by Jose. The second issue that I'd like to speak on is Counselor Bacon's agenda item about forcing councilors to come into council chambers during a pandemic, which we are still in. The rates are currently rising in Massachusetts. I think it's cruel to make anybody come in person, especially I see people in there without masks on. We don't know who's vaccinated. You don't know what people's medical history is. You don't know what the medical history of the people in their family is. You don't know if they have small children who are not vaccinated. Bacon, it's public record that she gave three thousand dollars, the maximum donation to our former President Trump, who is a, who is famous for his misinformation on COVID. And it's also note that I don't believe she should be a medical expert, even though she's a nurse, because the Massachusetts Nurses Association endorsed her opponent.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Are you going to consider the source?
Order. Please.
Point of order.
Thank you. What bullying. This is ridiculous.
Public record, not bullying.
The next speaker on Zoom is Guy Oldonnel.
Hello. Hi, my name is Guy Oldonnel. My address is three sixty-seven Aframont Highway. And I just want to talk on two things as well. One is Indigenous Peoples' Day. One is Indigenous Peoples' Day. I believe the country is definitely moving towards Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I think this makes a lot of sense. We've been talking a lot more about the history of Christopher Columbus, what he did and up to including the genocide that he helped commit on the Native Americans. I don't believe the choice between honoring a person who has committed genocide and the victims of that genocide, I do not believe that is controversial. So I hope that Holyoke can pass this and make sure that we are celebrating Indigenous People rather than Columbus. The other one is also about people serving in city government and being public employees. I believe that people who have chosen to do public service and work for our public schools, helping our community and our children should be the people that we are encouraging to run for office, not the people that we are barring from running for office. So thank you for taking your time to listen to me tonight. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Guy. I believe that's all hands that are up on Zoom. All people vindicated in the chambers, they want to speak. We do offer and have two emails. I'm going to read into the record very quickly. The first one is from Linda Pratt, 39 St. Colby Drive. Although I am unable to speak at tonight's meeting, I fully support item 17 on the agenda, changing the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. It is my hope that the full city council endorses this change as a small step towards recognizing the importance and the value of people who lived here prior to the arrival of Europeans and who continue to contribute to much of our communities today. The second one is from Susan Van Pelt, 246 Walnut Street. On the agenda for this evening are two items for which I speak, I ask specific action. Please refer item 21A assigned for the Delaney House to the Law Department for a full opinion before taking action. The sign would appear to violate local ordinances, creating a special permit out of error, seems to violate state law regarding zoning and procedures. Proceeding without a full legal opinion might put enforcers, enforcers like the building department in a catch 22 and leave the city open to lawsuits. Surely the city and the city's residents and businesses would be better off served by a full legal review first and by a fair and equal process through clear regulations and procedures for exemptions or special permits. That apply for, to all rather than in, than ad libbing on the rules and, and times someone thinks that they can with just nine, with nine votes. Also, please support 17H Indigenous Peoples' Day in Holyoke. Thank you for considering my views.
Mr. President?
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, if we could, I see one of Holyoke's famous business owners in the audience, Mick Corduff. If we could take up the order pertaining to the Delaney House? Out of order?
Second.
Counsel Bartley, are we? Sure. This would be item number 21A. It's under committee reports, the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom is referred and ordered a special permit application of Peter Rosenthal of the Delaney House and Lot Cabin 3 Country Road to replace an existing double-sided billboard facing I-91 with a new double-sided non-accessory electronic sign of approximately 672 square feet to be mounted on the pole, approximately 40 feet of height with a V-shaped structure recommended that the order be adopted with conditions.
The motion is just to receive the committee report.
Motion made second, receive the committee report. Committee report, Counsel Bartley.
Under discussion, Mr. President. I'm, I'm going to propose, I'm going to propose two amendments to the, to the, to the special permit. And then pursuant to a discussion I had, an email discussion I had with the Law Department, I, I'm, well, I'm going to ask us for, to, to approve those amendments tonight. And then I'm going to ask us to refer this to the legal department for a final review of the special permit. And then I'm finally going to ask that we lay this on the table. So let me just go through my steps first, Mr. President. The first amendment I want to make is that the special permit would only run to the current applicant in, and shall, shall not be transferable. Let me just, let me just make sure I say this properly. Only to the, so the, the special permit shall only run to the owner in his, an ownership group in its current form and shall not be transferable to a subsequent party.
A second.
Okay, just under discussion on that.
Amendment made second to Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, just under discussion on that. That's, and again, this is something that we're going to have reviewed by the Law Department. My, my thinking on this is as follows. The applicant right now, we all know, we know Peter Roskott, we know Mick Corduff. They are admired and respected members of the community. But at some point, should this go forward, and we'll get to my second amendment in a second, should this go forward, at some point, and whatever the point, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, not everything lasts forever. So perhaps the Lot Cabin gets sold to some other entity. Meanwhile, there's an entity there that has this enormous digital billboard that may or may not say something that we particularly like. So it should be, the only way that city council keeps a hand in it is to keep the special permit in his pocket. So if we approve it now, that's great because, because we know Peter, we know, we know Mick. But a, a city council down the road, Mr. President, may be aware of the change of ownership, ownership. They may or may not want to continue with this enormous 672 square foot digital billboard on there. So that's amendment number one. I, I don't know if we have to take separate votes on this, but I just, again, ultimately I'm just going, I'm going to make a motion on table, but it's up to the president to call for order, so.
We can do it one at a time. So the amendment has been made in second that the special permit would be ownership to the group, current group of owners in that it would remain with them. If there was any change in that or any sale of the property, then a new special permit would be required under this amendment. Is there any questions on the amendment or any further discussion? On the, on the first amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Second amendment, Counsel Bartley.
My second amendment, everybody, not, once you hear this, now you don't know why I have high blood pressure. So my second amendment is that the petitioner shall comply with all state rules and regulations.
Second.
Second. Thank, okay, pretty straightforward. Pretty straightforward, isn't it? That, I think that was, that was probably a winner for everybody, but this, this is where, and, and I just want to give credit to our friend, the administrative assistant, who keeps me, who keeps me in line. And what he sent to me was a notice. And this is what I love. I love it. We're little old, Holyoke, but we had a public hearing, you know, those are members of the committee, we sat right there. Notice was sent to Commonwealth of Mass, Mount Tom Reservation, Mount Tom, oh, Commonwealth of Mass, Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Mount Tom Board of Reservation Committee. You know who we heard from at the public hearing amongst those groups? Exactly none. None of them. But it's come to my attention that the billboard as, as proposed where it is may be within a buffer zone. And I mean just barely within a buffer zone. So the Commonwealth was going to come in, you idiots in Holyoke, you granted a permit and they're in a buffer zone and doggone it, that's the end of it. Checkmate, you lose. So this amendment would say comply, yes, we understand, comply with the Commonwealth of Mass rules, rules and regulations. But wouldn't it be nice if in a public hearing in which they were all duly noticed, Jeff sent to me the copy that he got from the assessor's office? They all knew about the meeting. They could have come here to Dwight Street or they could have come in on Zoom like half of America does, but they chose to do nothing. So this will just cover us going forward. So that's my second amendment to this.
Second amendment would read that the special permit once granted, a condition that the holder would abide by all state rules and regulations. Is there any discussion on the second amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to legal.
Second.
And then a motion to lay on the table.
Second.
Motion first, refer to the legal department to, to review all questions of legality of the actions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And second, the motion made in second to lay on the table, we don't debate that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. It is on the table for our next meeting. Under communications, item number seven.
Make motion to be referred to the Finance Committee.
Motion made second to receive and refer to committee on finance. It's the settlement agreement by, in between the city of Holyoke and the local UFCW known as the Council on Aging Employees 1459. Motion is to receive, refer to committee on finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number eight from the Office of Planning and Development.
Make motion to be received and sent to ordinance.
Motion made second to receive and refer to committee on ordinance. This revolves an LLC known as Canalive Genetics at 532 Main Street, Suite 301. Motion is refer to committee on ordinance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number nine is communication from OPEC in regards to the census data for Holyoke.
DGR, please.
Motion made second to receive, refer to committee on DGR. Any discussion?
Yeah, can we discuss?
Counsel Bartley.
Or, or so what's, what we're going to do in DGR that night is we're going to finalize, recommend finalizing the ward and precinct lines. We are furthermore, thanks to a little research we did and we have through the Mass Municipal Association, which we're all members, I hope, we have until December 15th, Mr. President, to ship that to Mr. Galvin in Boston for a final consensus, okay? So we'll, we'll, we'll do our best December 1st. We'll take it before first, full city council, the first meeting in December, and then we'll ship it off to Boston.
Thank you, Counsel Bartley. The realigning of the maps and the recognizing of the federal census every 10 years is part of what we do and it's a very important step. We were put on hold, put on hold and put on hold, and now we're put under the gun. And I appreciate what you're, I think we all appreciate what your committee's doing.
Well, thanks to leadership, Mr. President, because frankly, you're the one that got us going on, on the whole thing. And then, then we had the plug pulled in, when was it, March?
March, yeah.
Yeah, and now we're saying hurry up and get it done. Okay, Boston, okay.
On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number 10 is a letter of resignation from our chief assessor, Anthony DeLude, effective December 1st, 2021.
Motion received.
Received.
Motion made second to receive, and I think I can speak for everyone, but I'm sure others will like to say a couple of words, but to congratulate and thank Anthony for his many, many years of, of service in a position that's very important, but often unsung to the, to the corridors of the city hall. Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I would just echo your thoughts and thank Mr. DeLude. I had my seven months as acting mayor. He was very willing to assist in terms of financial information and projections. And so he, he was a good partner in terms of doing that. I know he's looking forward to his chance at the retirement board. I know we're in good hands with Assessor Brunel, so, you know, I just want to thank him for what he's done for the city for many years. I don't actually know how many years, but it's a lot of years, I know that. So thank you, Tony, for what you've done and good luck in the future.
Counsel Leahy?
I just wanted to echo those words. Tony DeLude, Anthony DeLude is a pure gentleman. He's class act. He's, he's worked tirelessly for the city of Holyoke. And anytime I had any questions, whether it was, you know, eight o'clock at night or whatnot, I would text him. He always get back to me very quickly. So I just want to say congratulations to him and this is a better thing for him and the city. Thank you.
Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, just thanks to, to Tony for his, his support and friendship for all these, all these years. He's always somebody we always really looked up to in the neighborhood and, and, and his career here in, in the city government, it will continue, but his work on the, on the Board of Assessors speaks volumes. It should also be noted, just as a practical matter, that it's this body that appoints the new assessor. And, and my hope is that we'll have a referral from HR and we'll have, we'll have some hearings in, in public, public service committee soon to interview some, some applicants. Thank you.
Counsel Thomas?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. DeLude for the work he's done for the city. I think it's probably, probably approximately 30 years. I know since I've been on the council, he's been very helpful in me and, and of course, tax time is always here, prepared with the questions that we had. And anytime I had a, an issue or a problem that, you know, he'd, he'd be right there willing to get the answer for me. And I wish him all in this new position.
Is there any further discussion? Counsel Greeney?
Thanks, Tony. Did a great job. Everybody in Holyoke appreciates it.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, a motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number 11 is a letter from a citizen of Holyoke requesting a crosswalk replaced at the Whiting Street Reservoir.
Motion received.
Motion is made a second to receive. I would like to read the letter. I, I hope everybody will appreciate. This is probably the best item I've seen on this agenda all evening. Hello, my name is William O. I am eight years old and I live in Holyoke. I am writing to ask you to consider putting a crosswalk at Whiting Street Reservoir because I love that park, but it's scary to cross the road. Thank you, William O. I think that's one of the nicest communications we've received in a long time. Counsel Murphy knows more.
I just want to make a motion that we receive it, but we also refer to either the Public Safety Committee or the DGR Committee because we should meet with the Water Department, we should meet with the DPW and the City Engineer to see what kind of crosswalk we need there.
Motion sent to DGR. Motion made second to refer to DGR. If it does require an ordinance, we'll have to file an order to catch up with it down the road, just to keep that in mind. On a motion to refer to DGR, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 12.
Motion received.
Motion made second to receive, the minutes of the Board of Fire Commissioners from September 23rd, 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 13. Motion received. The Board of Public Works Sewer Commission, Stormwater Commission Minutes for October 18th, 2021. Motion received. All those in favor?
If I can.
Any opposed? So moved.
Mr. President?
Counsel Murphy?
I just want to thank the commissioners for making sure that we are now getting minutes. And I know that's been something that we've been trying to get. So I think they're now going to be providing them on a regular basis. And it, it just provides information that we should have, so thank you.
And Mr. President, I just.
Thank you, Counsel Bartley.
I just want to echo that and I want to thank Commissioner Devine and the rest of, rest of the Board of Public Works because, and it helps us to understand what's going on in, in the third largest department in city government. So we already know what's, we already get minutes from the Fire Department, which I hope the new counselors will regularly read. And we, we hear regularly from the Police Department as well. So this is going to be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. On a motion received, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 14 is a communication from Johnson, Scalfani and Moyardi, a letter and a notice of intent to sell Lot 2 on Mountain Road, Holyoke, Mass pursuant master general laws, 61A, Section 14, portion of 50 Mountain Road assessors and the parcel number 20600065.
DGR, please.
Motion made second to receive, refer to committee on DGR. Is there any discussion? There is a copy up here if anybody hasn't received it. We will get you one. Motion refer to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 15 is from the Mencin Group LLC, a letter regarding a Holyoke Zone Ordinance, Section 710. Marijuana establishments request the council to correct or rescind the council vote on May 20th due to errors in the ordinance.
Rescind ordinance?
Received and sent to ordinance.
Motion made second to receive, refer to committee on ordinance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Our next portion of the meeting, it comes under is petitions. We have one petition this evening, item number 16 of Canalive Genetics LLC for Marijuana Manufacturing Establishment at 532 Main Street.
Received and sent to ordinance.
Motion made second to receive, refer to committee on ordinance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. The, the president's report is, is a part of the meeting that we started some time ago that allows the president to update everybody on any activities that are taking place outside the chambers, that the president or someone participated in, and also time to talk about things that are upcoming in the community as quickly as possible, but it's a good part of, of the agenda. Our administrative assistant has asked me to, on behalf of Todd, remind everybody that those pictures don't just appear on the wall. The photographer will be here at our next meeting, December 7th. Come dressed with a smile and be prepared. By 5:00 PM, the photographer will start. If you need to take retakes, Counsel Murphy, you know, they'll take as many as they can.
Well, are you saying that I need to have a special retake?
Well, you get to take two pictures this.
Oh. I, I only break cameras one time.
Is there any other discussion on the president's report? Counsel Greeney?
Just quickly, Mr. President, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Mark Chetel's mother. Mark ran for city council at large in the last election and he lost his mother. So I'd just like to offer a moment of silence for that.
Thank you. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. We all send Mark and family our best. Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the Holyoke High School Hall of Fame banquet at Wyckoff a few Saturdays ago with, actually with Mark. And it was, I think it was attended by 380 people. There were numerous inductees, wonderful attendance and, and participation by members of many, many classes of Holyoke High, of which several of us graduated a long time ago, in my case. And, and so we, we just want to acknowledge, A, the inductees and congratulate them, including several of my high school classmates. including several of my high school classmates. And then, we want to acknowledge the hard work of the Hoyoke High School Committee. They, they meet year-round, and they put a lot of time and effort into it. And they really pulled off a fine event at Wykoff Park. And thanks to the staff at Wykoff as well.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I too just want to congratulate everybody that received this very prestigious award. And I also want to congratulate and give props to my good friend, John Brunel, and his crew. As David, as Counselor Bartley said, they do work throughout the year, and it's not an easy task. And the second thing I'd like to say is congratulations to the Hoyoke Children's Museum. They just recently had their Fancy Feet fundraiser, which was another sellout, another huge success for that beautiful museum. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, thank you, Joe. Just something I want to announce. I told my wife I'd announce it, and even though I got to spend the day with her today, I want to wish my wife, Nettie, a very happy birthday today. She's not too crazy, I'll be being down here, but it's important to do the work of the, the city. And I do wish her many more years of good health and happiness.
Happy birthday, Nettie.
Joe, if I could, just one last thing?
Counselor Leahy?
Because I don't want Counselor Tomlin to show me up. I want to wish my wife a happy birthday Friday. Happy birthday. Luckily, I thought of Saturday, Joe reminded me it was Friday. I'm glad you told me that earlier.
Sorry, Eileen, I gotta keep watch on him. Um, two real quick things. One, my birthday is not November third. Our Facebook, for some reason, changed my personal information. I got a lot, my birthday's in July. So, no more wishes for a November third birthday for Joe. Two, Veterans Day. A number of us, both elect incumbents and elected officials, were able to attend the Veterans Day ceremony, which was the first one in two years in person. Mayor Murphy did a fantastic job speaking for the city. Counselor Bartley, Counselor Tomlin did a fantastic job presenting two proclamations. We were joined by Counselor Bacon. We were joined onstage also by... Counselor Juan Anderson Burgos.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I, well, I was gonna say something that day, but you never correct the, the emcee, right? And we were joined by a number in the audience of elect newly-elected city counselors. And of course, our longest-serving city official, longest-serving official in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Ronnie Colummore, from the school committee. And it was fantastic, because the veterans don't like to be talked about. They want to talk about others. This, this body gave three proclamations. The Veteran of the Year, their granddaddy was Edwin Cologne. I think everybody knows Edwin from the post office. Mike Falsetti, the Citizenship Award winner, was just, he couldn't say enough, enough nice things. He seemed surprised, although he was told ahead of time. But, you know, he did seem surprised and was generally grateful for that. And the, the Public Safety went to Larry Roberson, which surprised me, because I work with Larry. He's a court, Assistant Court Officer Chief here in Hoyoke District Court, and he does a lot of things out in the community. But great job on the veterans and everyone that was able to attend in person. It was wonderful. I just wanted to bring that up. Anything else? Okay. Reports of committees, what we also call, "It's Time to Go to Work," hour and a half after we started. These are where committees have reported on something. They come out with recommendations, and we typically are in position to take a final vote. The committee on ordinance is up first. Item number seventeen H, when's the first order, the city of Hoyoke reexamine the current ordinance, which only specifies that the snow and ice shall be removed from the entire width of the sidewalk on all portions of streets in which parking meters are installed, but does not state this is for residential, Section seventy-eight, one forty-one, removal of snow and ice. A, no owner or person in control of estate abutting upon any street, lane, court, or square within the city where there is a sidewalk shall place or suffer, place or suffer, remain to more than twenty-four hours of snow upon such sidewalk, or any ice such sidewalk, unless the ice is made even and covered with sand, sawdust, ashes, or other suitable material to prevent slipping. Nor shall any person place any ice or snow on any private property or public ways. This section applies to snow, ice, which may have fallen from a building upon such a sidewalk, and the snow to which may have accumulated upon such a sidewalk by drifting in the ice form, by water running and accumulating upon such sidewalk. Portions of streets with parking meters, where our parking meters are installed, all snow, ice shall be removed with, from the entire width of the sidewalk within eight hours after the snowstorm has ended. We are currently having issues. Nine forty-one Dwight Street, which does not abide by the ordinance and which finally gets complying shovels out to a twelve-inch path in the shovel-to-the-corner lot in Linden and Dwight, residents have raised their avid discontent in this matter. The HPD, Board of Health have tried with, have tried resources in the matter. And as most recent, as last, the last snowstorm appears that the owner is not aware of his property lines and responsibility. See the library of images I am including since the snow season has started. The committee for ordinance has recommended that the, the order be adopted. Counselor Lisi, could you sum up the committee report?
Sure, thank you. So, I believe that this was filed by Counselor Hernandez, and please correct me if that's not the case. But it seems that there was, let, let me actually make the motion first, I apologize. So, motion that the committee report be adopted and passed at first reading.
Second.
Motion made second.
Thank you. So, that's under discussion?
Under discussion, Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. So, then, it seems that there, there have, in the past, you know, been some issues with asking residents to comply with the snow and ice removal ordinance, because it did not state residential zones specifically. And so, the Police Department and the Board of Health were both sort of handicapped with a tool. They were without a tool to, you know, require residents to clear, clear the ice and snow from, from their area. So, the changes that we made to the ordinance include the residential zones. I was not present for this discussion in committee, so I defer to either the maker or Juan Anderson Burgos, who was cheering that evening, if there's other details that need to be added. But for the most part, it's really just giving the Police Department or anybody that has enforcement authorities, such as the Board of Health, the ability to enforce snow and ice removal for residential areas.
Okay, and when I, when the chair reads the, the agenda item, that's typically the order that was filed by the maker of the order. In the committee, we do have the legal form, and it's real short. The added, added section is called C. Allowed by Mass General Laws, Chapter eighty-four, Section five, any owner or occupant of land abutting sidewalk may be fined fifty dollars for each violation under Section seventy-eight, one forty-one. Department of Public Works shall be responsible for enforcing the provisions. Any other members of the committee?
Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, just quickly, I have a question through the chair, to the, to the, from, to the President, to the Chair of the Ordinance Committee. In Section A, where it says, "No owner or person in control abutting upon restaurant, city downer sidewalk shall place or suffer to remain more than twenty-four hours in the snow upon such..." Shouldn't that read twenty-four hours from the end of the storm? I mean, it's, it's not clear what the twenty-four hours ceiling is.
So, that's not, that's not the legal form. So, I would just ask President McGivern to check the legal form for Section A. I'm not sure if you have that in front of you, where Section C has now been added.
Joe? Counselor Bartley, if you could help out?
Yeah, I, I think I can, I can try to help out. So, the, the, what's before us on this order is, I believe, it looks like the current. What's being proposed is section, a new Section B says, "All snow and ice shall be removed from the entire width of the sidewalk within eight hours after the cessation, cessation of any snowstorm." That's, that's what, that's what's being offered right now.
And, and thank you, Counselor Bartley, and the chair apologizes. It also is striking Section B and then replacing it.
Mr. President?
So, it's actually rewriting it.
Under discussion still?
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I'm sorry I missed the meeting, but I, and, and I think it's a well-intentioned order, and generally, I would support this. But I, I would just want to hear from the Law Department, because this is pretty well-settled law, especially case law and tort law, relative to how long a landlord has to remove snow and ice from, from property and sidewalks. And the, and the law, it's very settled. It's twenty-four hours. And so, now, what we're saying, somehow in the city of Hoyoke, we're gonna cut that by, into a third of the time. Now, I understand that we want to have our sidewalks cleaned. I mean, I, I want to have catch basins cleaned. I want to have all sorts of stuff happen immediately, but there's a consequence to this action. I don't know if this is go, if this is, I mean, this, we're talking Supreme Judicial Court case law on twenty-four hours. Now, I'll stand corrected if the Law Department wants to reply to that, to say that we can, in essence, by an ordinance, subvert Supreme Judicial Court precedent. I don't think we can, but I'd like to hear from the Law Department, or, or, otherwise, I'd, I'd have trouble. Again, this is well-intentioned. It makes sense up to a point. But if you think it out a little bit, just think it out a little bit with landlords and all the rest of this now, and with multiple properties, you've got, you've got to get it done. And when the clock strikes eight hours, that's tough. And then, next thing you know, it's gonna be lawsuits and all sorts of things. And whether these lawsuits are gonna be based upon ordinance compared to SJC precedent, I don't know if that works. So, I would just say we ought to be, take a deep breath on this. But it's my take. Thank you.
Excuse me? I think we will go to the Law Department in one second. Counselor Murphy and then Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I also have a concern. I know the intent of the order, and it, and it was to make sure that's all sidewalks, the entire width of the sidewalk gets cleared. That was the intent of the order. And then, as we amended it, and it was, the, the part that we're amending related to those streets with parking meters, which are, which have had an eight-hour impact. Obviously, we're trying to get parking meters and keep business going. But I think we need to either send this back to the Law Department or amend it here, where we would basically say, "All snow and ice shall be removed from the entire width of the sidewalk within twenty-four hours after the cessation of any snowstorm." And then, keep on force, on all portions of the streets in which parking meters are installed, all snow and ice shall be removed from the entire width of sidewalk within eight hours after the cessation, cessation of the snowstorm. I think that would both maintain the twenty-four hours where it has always been, but also make sure that any property owner knows you can't just do a shovel opening of your sidewalk and leave the rest of the sidewalk cluttered. And I've seen, and I, and I know I've seen pictures from Counselor Hernandez provided. So, I think that was the intent. And, and I could not support this as is, because I think eight hours for most people that are not in business would, would not be something that's gonna be easily done.
Mr. President?
Counselor Leahy and Counselor Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you. I, I too, you know, I appreciate the effort and the intent of the width of the sidewalk. However, I have just a couple of issues. One is if a person, you know, for instance, is, you know, the snowstorm stops at seven A.M. in the morning, and the person has to get to work, now what's this person going to do? You know, are they gonna miss work? Are they going to have to take vacation time, sick time? You know, try to get the kids to school, that sort of thing? So, I think the twenty-four hours is, is fair. And the second thing is, who's gonna be responsible for, if it's a public owned, or if it's a private-owned building? Is it the renter, or is it the landlord that's going to be fined? And the third thing is, I don't think we should make any changes until the city of Hoyoke takes care of the city streets. You know, there's a lot of, or the city sidewalks. You see a lot of sidewalks that, you know, go two, three, four days without being shoveled. You know, we gotta put our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, when we discussed as an ordinance, that's what we had specifically said, that it was gonna be twenty-four hours. The eight hours was always referring to wherever there was parking meters. So, I'm not sure how this came in this form, but it's just a simple amendment. And yes, I agree, Counselor Leahy, that we do need to do a better job at taking care of our own city streets. And, but we do have to hold private landlords accountable, because this happened more than one time. And there was access that was being prevented from mothers with strollers and people on wheelchairs of accessing the sidewalk. So, hopefully, with the amendment, can this be done today, the amendment on the floor, rather than sending it to legal, since it's so simple?
It's a fair question. I think we need to hear from legal first. Depending on the amount of change, because our rules state that we have to have everything in legal form before we do anything, which everybody did receive a copy of this in legal form. And it's, it is confusing, because it's a very uncompensating ordinance to begin with, and the changes are, seem to be small, but they are changing a lot. But the chair entertain a motion to allow our assistant city solicitor to...
Motion is suspended, rules to allow our solicitor to speak.
Motion made second to allow the solicitor to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Attorney Deegan is with us.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening, counselors. Perhaps I didn't understand the intent. It was my understanding that it was the Section B, and it was the parking meters are installed. It, what the pictures I saw was that, you know, some of the owners or occupants were simply taking a shovel and just doing a small pathway, and that that was an issue. So, what I did was I took the parking meters are installed out. Quite frankly, the eight hours has always been there. But I do agree that it makes sense to have twenty-four hours, especially after listening to some of the comments that I've heard. The other part was, had to do with, there was no penalty, and we didn't have anyone to enforce. So, I looked at the law, and as Acting Council President McGivern said, that it comes from state statute. That's where the fines come from. But as far as the time period, however you want to handle it, I do not disagree that twenty-four hours at the cessation would probably be easier, quite frankly, for people to abide by. So, I, I have no legal challenge to that amendment, if, if that's what you wish.
Joe?
If that's your amendment, I'll second it.
Okay, yes, that will be my amendment. Thank you.
And I'll second it.
Okay, amendment made second to change eight hours to twenty-four hours. Counselor Bartley?
Yes, so, as I said, and I'm glad now that everybody agrees with me on, on reading this, this amendment. But I don't think it's prudent to pass this tonight. I would much rather, and I'm gonna make two points, because there, there's no imminent threat at this point of anything. So, we can, we can table this, and we should have it in legal form. I want to see it written down in legal form before me, because this would not cut it. And if I hadn't read this, we were gonna go through the motions and pass something that wasn't gonna work. So, this is why if we just take a deep breath and read it. The second point, Mr. President, just for consideration, I, I am not going to support the enforcement provision as it's written now. You're, by writing this, the way this is written out, you're putting enforcement in the hands of Public Works employees. This is to start having, passing out fines. They did not sign up for this. I know it's probably part of Mass General Law, great. But that is a police power that should be just kept right with the Police Department. So, if the Public Works wants to call, but they shouldn't be going around giving tickets. You know, they're not. In this day and age, frankly, Mr. President, I, I just think that needs to be softened or, or broadened somehow to make the, maybe make them a mandated reporter, for lack of a better phrase, fine. But to say that a Public Works employee is gonna go around and start handing out tickets, somebody doesn't do the sidewalk exactly according to Hoyol, I cannot support that part as written. So, I would just humbly ask that, that, A, we get this all in legal form again, so we can read it thoroughly. And then, if, if necessary, the next time, I'll make an amendment. And I, because I want to get some input certainly from Public Works employees, who are gonna wake up after we pass this to find out, oh, yeah, you gotta start walking around with a ticket book during a storm. I'm, I'm gonna want to get their take. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi, your hand is up?
I was just going to say that we should lay this, send this back to the committee, actually, because there's too many amendments that seem to be required.
Second.
Okay, there is an amendment on the floor. I don't see any harm in acting on the amendment first, and then refer everything back to committee so we... and then refer everything back to committee so we can iron out the points made. On the amendment, is there any discussion to change eight hours to 24? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It seems to be unanimous. And now a motion to refer back to the committee on ordinance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Seventeen B, the committee on ordinance, to refer an order to the city council review the fire department plan to review fees for the monitored fire alarm systems. Recommend that the order has been complied with.
As the maker of the order, I'd like to hear the committee report. And I might, I might be sending this back to committee as well.
Okay. Just for purposes of abiding by our rules, the motion would be to receive, adopt. And then we can always change that. Motion, receive and adopt.
Receive, adopt the committee report. And under discussion, I defer to Counsel Anderson Burgos, who was the chair for that conversation.
I don't have any of the documents with me. I'm so sorry.
Any member of the committee present that evening? Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The representatives from the fire department came in. They went through the entire program and policies and procedures that they're following relative to the review fee, how they're charging them out. And many of you will remember that we had quite a lengthy discussion at the time that they were instituted, and they came in and explained how they price it out and everything. So they came in and gave us an update on that. And they also informed us that there has been a lot more compliance relative to this matter, and that they continue to follow the policies and procedures as outlined. So based on the fact that they answered what the order asked for, we found it complied with.
And Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. So as the maker of the order, I think that my intention here was really, it seems that the fire department is assessing fees in one way, and then other city departments are assessing fees in other ways. So some, in some places, it's by the square footage. In some other places, it's just by the, you know, the sprinkler system or the fire alarm system that's being installed, and the price is being assessed by the size of the building overall. And so I just wanted to see if we could build some parity across departments in terms of the way that building owners are being assessed fees for different issues that they're trying to sort of bring up to date in their buildings. We want to make sure that we're not creating excessively high fees for folks to do those updates in the city. And so, you know, I, I'm going to say it's complied with for now, and I'll have a conversation with the chief, and I may refile this order or ask one of the new counselors to file it, since they all go stale at the end of the term anyhow. So a motion that it be complied with is fine.
Forty-two years, items have never gone stale at the end of the term since I've been here. But it seems to be the popular notion these days. Motion on the floor is that the order in the committee report recommends it's been complied with. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item seventeen C, the committee on ordinance, to refer an order that the city file a home rule petition with Representative Duffy and Senator Velez, allowing the Hoyoke Police Department the authority to confiscate and destroy illegal dirt bikes in OH, off-track vehicles, I believe, similar to the petition filed for Springfield and currently pending in the state legislature. Recommend that the order has been adopted but amended, replacing destroy with manage.
Thank you. So receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion made second, receive, adopt the committee report. Counsel Lisi?
Yes, thank you. So this was filed by Counsel Murphy. And there were similar orders filed by Counsel Leahy and McGee. But this one in particular is looking to file a home rule petition with our state delegation that really mirrors what Springfield has filed and the way that the state legislature has adopted and amended their original home rule petition. One of the big issues that came up in the committee discussion here for the ordinance committee was that the language to confiscate and destroy seemed excessive. And it seems that what we learned from Attorney Bissonette during the committee discussion is that those similar sentiments had been felt by others in the State House, and they had included provisions for due process. And then it allows the confiscating authority to, you know, figure out if they're going to them off or sell them. Destroying them. It could even become a source of revenue for, for communities.
Counsel Lisi? If you can hear me, you're actually going in and out. You're echoing. Are you on two devices? We're going to give her a minute to get back in. In the meantime, if you can hear us, you're nothing but an echo. Counsel Murphy, while we're waiting for Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. So I, two things, or three things, actually. So there were three orders I filed, and I, my colleague to my right, I'm hoping he can have Representative Duffy make sure that we work with Representative Velez and try to make our, our home rule petition pass as well. But just today, I know Springfield signed a gas ordinance which prohibits gas stations to sell gas to illegal dirt bike riders. That was one of the other considerations. And there's also an ordinance which we are trying to raise the fines to make it much more prohibitive. If you are violating the law in Hoyoke, that you're going to pay a significant fine. And I know Chicagobee has filed all the same pieces of legislation. Springfield's got the gas one done today. The home rule petition is there. They're also looking to expand the penalty so that if we can do all three, all three communities, and my speculation is that West Springfield and Westfield are also going to want to get in on this so that we can potentially have some pretty significant regional approach to dealing with these illegal dirt bikers. So I appreciate the committee taking it up and making this recommendation to the, our state delegation.
I believe Counsel Lisi is still frozen or not back yet. And we lost her completely.
I'll make a motion in committee report, be received and adopted.
Second.
Okay, we are doing this by ordinance. So the first motion was on the floor already to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. The motion I just heard was to pass a second reading. Any discussion? All those in favor?
He's coming in now.
So moved. And Counsel Lisi is back. Rebecca, round the second reading.
Thank you, and thanks, Counsel Murphy, for taking over that discussion. Motion to pass the second reading.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And, oh, that's it. We don't need, do we need multiple readings for this?
Actually, it's my mistake.
No, it's just an adoption.
Yeah, it's a home rule petition. We just have to adopt. So if there's no further discussion, a clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the home rule petition. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've adopted the home rule petition. We have two...
Motion to suspend the rolls and take up items D and E as a package.
Motion made second to suspend the rules to take seventeen D and seventeen E as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Both from the committee on ordinance. Seventeen D is a handicap sign be placed at 122 Brown Avenue. Norma Rivera is the petitioner, recommend it be adopted. Seventeen E, a handicap sign be removed from 580 South Summer Street. Originally had a placard number P-03205121, and that person has moved. Recommend that be adopted. The motion is to do both of these, these amendments to our ordinance, traffic ordinance as a package. Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. They're self-explanatory. They're amendments to the traffic ordinances related to handicap parking. In one case, we're putting one out, and then the other, we're removing.
Is there any further discussion? Motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
And motion to the passage be ordained.
Motion made in second, the passage be ordained. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting on the amendments to the traffic ordinance. If you vote no, you are voting against both amendments.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've amended the traffic ordinance. Seventeen F, committee on ordinance, to refer an order, chapter sixty-six, secondhand goods, article two, junk and secondhand dealers, section sixty-six dash thirty-nine, exemptions from article be amended to add fabric after automobiles. The purpose is, the current ordinance is to prevent resale of goods such as electronics and other collectibles that may be stolen. Secondhand fabric appears to not fit in the spirit of the ordinance, and the requirements of the ordinance were present unnecessarily burdensome restrictions on businesses, owners receiving and selling secondhand fabric. Recommend that the order be adopted. And I believe the chair read it wrong. The amendment is to remove fabric, correct?
Right. It's to add fabric to the exemptions category.
Ah, thank you. That's why you get the big bucks for being the chair. Counsel Lisi, the motion to pass the first reading.
Yes. Motion to pass the first reading?
Made in second. Under discussion. Counsel Lisi?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so it's very self-explanatory. Right now, we have an ordinance regarding junk and secondhand dealers. And there's a lot of sort of requirements that junk and secondhand dealers have to go through in terms of documenting, you know, who's bringing in the items, what they are, keeping a log of what those items are. And that's to prevent people who have stolen goods from then selling them at a secondhand store and when it's not theirs to begin with. So in order for the police to have a record of where these items are coming from, these junk and secondhand dealers are required to keep these sort of documentations. Here, what we're looking to do is add fabric to the list of exemptions so that the same set of requirements for documentation do not have to be met for someone who wants to sell fabric as a secondhand item. And this came up because it seems that we have two residents who are looking to open up a secondhand fabric business. And the current ordinance would just make it prohibitive to move forward on that business. And when we review it, it seems like it is a common sense addition here.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion made second that the ordinance amendment pass its second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And motion to the passage be ordained.
Motion made second, the passage be ordained. A clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of amending the ordinance by adding fabric to exemptions. If you vote no, you're voting against that.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've adopted the amendment to the ordinance. Item seventeen G, committee on ordinance, to refer an order that the ordinance committee review and look to change the residency requirement for the Department of Public Works Director. Recommend that the order has been adopted.
Receive and pass the first reading.
Motion made second to receive and pass the first reading. For purposes of discussion, does this make sense to also look at charter and rules?
Well, do we have, we have legal form for ordinance?
We have legal form for ordinance.
And we could take up charter and rules, I think, at the same time, although the language is different.
Okay. It's, if anybody is questioning what we're talking about, we, the ordinance committee reviewed this, I believe Counsel Murphy's order to address the residency requirement for the superintendent of the DPW. And we noted that it's also in the charter. Therefore, it's not just an ordinance change, it's actually a charter change. So quickly thinking...
Mr. President, I would suggest that we do them one at a time, but we could go to charter and rules out of order if you want to, to keep the issue together.
That's all. I was just thinking for discussion purposes, two separate votes. So we will take up the charter and rules committee report. Discussion-wise, simultaneously is what I'm suggesting, and then separate votes on each of them if we are ready to vote this evening. And that charter and rules is item number twenty-two. It's the order, same request. It was referred in order that the ordinance committee review the change of residence required waiting for the DPW director. So if we can for discussion on that, just take it up together. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Ordinance. Counsel Lisi, did you want to make a committee report?
Yeah, I mean, very briefly, it seems that, well, I'll say, I'll say a few things here. This was filed by Counsel Murphy because we currently have a residency requirement for DPW director. And as we've seen with multiple other department head positions in the past year or so, when they need to be filled, we haven't been able to access the widest talent pool by limiting the, the pool of applicants with a residency requirement. And so, you know, in general, there is a recommendation from, I guess, you know, Mass. Municipal Association that we sort of relax these residency requirements for positions throughout the city to ensure that you are able to access the broadest and most qualified talent pool that there is. We can change this very easily. You have the language before you for the ordinance form. However, it is also in our city charter. The DPW superintendent is listed in the city's charter as a position that's called out specifically. And so it needs the accompanying charter change that charter and rules took up earlier this week.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, just, we're voting on the ordinance first. The charter, in answer to Counsel Bacon's question, the committee report, we do not have the charter language in front of us this evening.
Additionally, I'm under the impression that a charter change would also need to be submitted to the voters.
If we get, if we can get to the report, I'll give it...
Okay. Well, on the ordinance change, is there any further discussion? The motion to pass the first reading on removing the residency clause. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Do you want to proceed to the second reading and just vote this out and then continue out of order to twenty-two? It seems neater that way.
Yes, please.
Yep. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion made in second to pass the second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And the motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made in second. The passage be ordained. If there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of changing the ordinance, removing your residency clause for the superintendent of the DPW. If you vote no, you're voting against that.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Grani?
No.
Nine yeas, three nays.
By your vote, with two-thirds majority, you have adopted the ordinance.
So motion to go out of order and take up charter and rules.
Motion made in second to go out of order to take up charter and rules. On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee on charter and rules to refer to order that the ordinance committee review and look at the residency requirements for the DPW director. Have considered that the same, and we are waiting disposition. Well, I'm sorry. Counselor Bacon, if you could make the committee report.
Thank you. So at the request of, at the time Acting Mayor Murphy, we met to take this up when it was determined during the ordinance committee meeting that it was also a charter issue. My understanding is that our legal department had forwarded language to the clerk prior to this meeting tonight, and I would just reference our recent vote on city solicitor, where we have sent a home rule petition to the state, and we're addressing sections forty-five and sections forty-six out of our charter. And what we did in the terms of the city solicitor was to add that person as an exemption along with our school superintendent. And so in this situation, we would be adding our DPW superintendent to that list along with our city solicitor. I was assured that the legal form is here. Maybe we can suspend rules to let legal.
Motion made in second to allow legal to, again, we already have, but again, to speak on an issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Attorney Deegan has her hand up.
Yes. Thank you, counselors. Yes, I did draft this, and I did indicate it last night's charter commission that you would have the language. I do have it drafted. I submitted it yesterday, which I know is a very late filing, but I noticed some other things had made it, so I thought this one would have made it too. Counselor Bacon is correct in the way that it's being done, just as it was for the city solicitor. And Counselor Bacon had a very good question at that meeting, and that is, you know, how would we do this? And I think Counselor Murphy, I answered that we did it separately, even though it's being worked on, the first one with the city solicitor that's being worked on. It's my understanding that Representative Duffy is going to take them together, even though we did them as separate home rule petitions. I I'm not sure why you don't have it. I thought that you would. So I apologize if you don't have it. You were meant to.
So as a point of order to the president, if it's been sent to the clerk's office, but it hasn't made it to your jacket, is it a technical matter that we can act on and correct administratively, or do we have to table it and wait until we have it in two weeks?
My.
You can remove it from committee, but I don't think that there's there doesn't seem to be a rush.
Well, we are trying to join it with the city solicitor one, which is already working its way through, and the urgency was coming from the mayor's office. And I understand it's shared by our former acting mayor and our new mayor in terms of recruiting. So that was the intent and the reason why we met last night.
We, I'll try and answer the best I can. We do, attorney to attorney Deegan, have a communication signed by her attached. Therefore, therewith is the consideration for both the ordinance amendments and the Holyoke Charter, chapter two, Article two, which is where the superintendent of DPW is. And the home rule petition, as Counselor Bacon and our assistant city solicitor said, is a way that we can do it. Boston, the legislature can actually, if they believe that this position should go to the voters, they can return it to us to put it on the ballot. There are certain positions we know up front there where we can't do it by home rule, where it has to go on the ballot first. So if that answers everybody's questions. As far as doing it this evening to Counselor Leacy, I think it's up to the body. I'm looking, it's attached, not to this order, but it's attached to, Attorney Deegan, if you can help me out, it looks like it's the language for chapter five fifty-six. That's the ordinance language. And then it goes on to say.
Are you looking at the home rule petition or the ordinance right now?
I'm it's attached to the to the it doesn't state home rule. It's attached to the the ordinance legal form. But your your communication says that the language for the home rule is with it. So I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. I sent I sent two things to the clerk. One was the home rule petition with with a cover letter, and the other one is the ordinance change with a cover letter.
I have it.
You have it.
An act to amend the charter of the city of Holyoke, section one, section forty-five, and it goes into detail what is everything that's been spoken this evening, essentially removing the superintendent of public works residency requirement.
So they must have just gotten.
It's just attached to the other the other report.
Mr. President?
Good enough.
Mr. President?
Counselor Counselor Grani.
A point of order. If we pass the ordinance tonight and the home rule petition comes back negative, what do we do?
The my humble opinion, and I'm sure the solicitor will agree, is the charter trumps everything. And that means the state legislature, our agreement with them is by charter. We have to amend the charter to get rid of residency. The ordinance can, you know, sometimes be stricter than the charter, but it can't supersede the charter itself.
So the ordinance would be moot?
It's, yeah. It's without the charter change, the ordinance change would be moot. Counselor Deegan? Deegan?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. The home of the ordinance that we're talking about, where it talks about when it'll become effective, it's section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon the passage of an amendment to sections forty-five and forty-six of the Holyoke Charter. So basically, in order for this ordinance to be valid, we have to we're waiting for the charter change to be made. So so to answer Counselor Grani's question, yeah, we thought of that and took care of that. So so I don't think we'll have an issue.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Grani.
That clarifies what I was getting at. Thank you very much, counselor.
Thank you.
So back to it's up to the up to the body. How you want to proceed?
I make a motion.
I defer to the chair. So the motion is to adopt, receive and adopt the committee report.
What I meant was, we can proceed, but it's up to the body.
Well, we have the language, so we're in proper order. So.
Absolutely.
We're good to go.
Okay. So on the motion, is there any further discussion? This is a a home rule petition, so the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I just want to I always give credit to the chair and to the hard work. I am going to oppose this. I think just one of the three major department heads. I think the residency requirement makes sense. We know that our population's dropped by two thousand. So I don't think it's a big ask to mandate that the third largest department in the city, in the city side of the government, maintain a residence in in this fair city. So I I oppose it just but again, I respect everybody's vote. I understand the need. I mean, general, I voted for waiving residency requirements before, but in this in this case, same with the other major departments, I think they belong, I think they should be mandated to live in the city, consequently, I'm going to vote no.
Any further discussion? If not, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of now a home rule petition asking the legislature to amend our charter and remove the residency clause for the superintendent of public works. Clerk will call the roll.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Grani?
Yes.
Ten yeas, two nays.
By your vote, you've adopted the home rule petition. Seventeen H. The Committee on Ordinance, to refer to order that the ordinances be updated to reflect Columbus Day will now be referred to as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Recommend the order has been adopted and as amended, formerly known as Columbus Day at the end.
Thank you. Receive and adopt the committee report. Pass the first reading.
Counselor Leacy, if I could, I've been marking you as signing off committee reports. I hope I'm doing the right thing.
All good.
Okay, by Zoom.
Yeah.
And number two is, I thought we referred this to the law department for a legal question to be answered, and we do not have legal form in front of us this evening.
No, I think we do have the legal form, and we had asked for it to be drafted into legal form, and if there were any outstanding questions, we could deal with them this evening. The big question was whether or not it was a federal holiday, and I think we all have discovered since then, and perhaps Attorney Deegan could speak more to it. But as of this year, October eleventh of twenty twenty-one, the federal government has recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday, formerly known as Columbus Day, and there are actually two states that are now recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. So we should have the legal language in front of us.
Okay, I'm just, it's not attached. As we know, it could be somewhere. So I'm suggesting, I guess, I hear, to allow Attorney Deegan to to speak on this.
Sure.
Yes. Yes, counselors. Thank you very much. I understand what Counselor Leacy is talking about. And as I recall, the last time this was brought up, I thought that it was a federal holiday. I went back to my research, and now I know where the language, the date came from. I think what I was tripping over was the fact that President Biden issued a proclamation saying that, you know, Veterans Day should be removed for.
Not Veterans Day. Not Veterans Day.
Columbus.
Pardon?
Columbus.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies. Columbus to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So there's no national order. However, Counselor Leacy is correct in that other cities, particularly in Massachusetts, have done this. They have, but it's through executive order. For example, the city of Boston, through their mayor, issued an executive order replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. So so it can be done. Quite frankly, I thought it was by ordinance, but I can't say, I mean, I think I think proclamation, I think is more of a suggestion. I thought it was an executive order, and when I went back to my notes and my research, I found that it was a proclamation. So but it can be done. It can be done through executive order. So it's not, I grant you, it's not what I was thinking the last time we met, but it's it can still be done by the city of Holyoke. So I mean, that's what I found, in case anyone else has any questions.
Joe? Joe? Just through the chair to Attorney Deegan, thank you for your research, as always. Do you agree with me that Columbus Day is a federal holiday? Because I don't think it's been overturned as a federal holiday. So I just want you to say the words that it is or is not a federal holiday.
Columbus Day?
We're talking about Columbus Day, yes, so.
Yes. Yes, I'm, yes, yes. And what President Biden was doing.
That's yes, what? So Columbus Day is a federal, I just want you to say the words. Is it is it a federal holiday, or is it not a federal holiday?
It is a federal holiday.
Okay, that's 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 all I want to clarify. I it's it is a federal holiday. I think that's undebatable. I also agree with Attorney Deegan that, yeah, other municipalities, and I guess some states, although I haven't heard of that, are overturning it, but are changing it. And that's that's all well and good, other municipalities for sure. But to emphasize, it is, in fact, a federal holiday. So there should be no debate on that. Thank you. Attorney Deegan, you said executive order. What's in front of us is a request to adopt an ordinance. Is there a legal form?
For for the executive order?
No, for the ordinance change. Executive order is the mayor. We're legislative.
Right. Right. No, I understand that. And I think what you asked for, you wanted to know whether or not, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day has has been moved to a national holiday, and it has not, from what I found, because a proclamation doesn't mean that. So you may wish to, I know there'll be debate about this, but because of your question, perhaps this ordinance should not pass, and it should be done by executive order from the mayor. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Counselor Leacy?
Thank you. Three things I want to raise are, number one, so nobody is looking to overturn Columbus Day here. What we're looking to do is recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so that's why, at the federal level, it has not been overturned. What's happening is that Indigenous Peoples' Day is being recognized, and as Attorney Deegan mentioned, the President Biden had issued a proclamation this year noting that Indigenous Peoples' Day is being recognized by the federal government. But I'm sure the federal government, like many of, you know, the questions raised by counselors in this discussion was, well, how could we, you know, how can we sort of reconcile Columbus Day? It's built into so many, like, labor agreements and union contracts. How can we figure out a way to recognize and give people the day off and the paid holiday for Indigenous Peoples' Day when Columbus Day is built into the contract? And that's why in our committee discussion, we were talking about building in the amended language that's before you in seventeen H, where we would just simply add the language that says formerly known as Columbus Day, so that while Columbus Day is still recognized, while Columbus Day is still in the labor contracts that we have, people can still get paid and that that time off, because it has not been, you know, changed at the federal level. But we could still recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day at the local level. And then I do want to just remind everyone that up until, I believe it was March or so of this year, we did have an executive order that recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday. It was rescinded by the acting mayor. And then we have also, since twenty twenty, no, it was this year, sorry, since twenty twenty-one, we have passed a resolution. The resolution was adopted by a supermajority of this body to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we were then advised that in order to give people the day off and have the holiday, that an ordinance needed to be adopted. So we just went through this process of having the discussion for how to draft the ordinance, again, to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, and to ensure that people, while Columbus Day was still in their contracts, we'd get that time off for Columbus Day, and we can very seamlessly make the transition once, you know, the state and or federal government make make a transition in the future. I do want to just, I'll leave it there, but I do want to make my own points about the the value of making this change. But I'll I'll stop here so that we could talk about the technical merits of the situation, and then we'll move on to the personal narratives. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to recognize the maker of the order, Counselor Hernandez, but again, there is no legal form with us.
I see that now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to add that it looks like we have arrived at a, what I'm hoping that we have arrived at a good day, a good night here in Holyoke, and that for the first time, a proclamation has been acknowledged and signed by a U.S. President, acknowledging the contributions of Native Americans, that we acknowledge that we're walking on native land, and that as a community and as a body, that we have to examine our biases and that reflect and address the impact of racism, and that we create opportunities and close opportunity gaps, and move towards a more inclusive way of thinking. And I think that this honorable body can can arrive at that. We can send an example and line up with our school department, which has taken the lead on this. They've been recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and implementing that curriculum in our schools that instills pride in our children in a town that's fifty-three percent Latinos. I think that it's the right thing to do, that on Columbus Day in twenty twenty-two, we can put on our website, the city of Holyoke celebrates Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we honor them, and we acknowledge the contributions as they help shape our nation. And that's all that I have to say. I hope that I can receive the support of my colleagues today, just as we received that supermajority support back in June when we passed the resolution. Thank you.
Counselor Grani?
Yeah, Mr. President, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just thought I
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just thought I heard the city solicitor say the appropriate way for this to take place was through executive order of the mayor. The new mayor is of Hispanic descent, Latino descent, Puerto Rican, and I think that it would be appropriate that if this is to pass, that it be a proclamation by the mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, uh, I think make corrections, since I was the acting mayor, that however, there was no, uh, resolution regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day that I withdrew an executive order for, it was to create Juneteenth as a holiday, so I want to make that correction. I, there was no Indigenous Peoples' Day that was on the executive order that I repealed, nor the one that I put out, so just to correct the process.
How quickly they forget. Is there any other discussion? Once again, we do not have a legal form in front of us. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, and I just want to give a minority report relative to this matter, and in committee, um, summarizing the statement that I made is, I think it's fine and wonderful if we recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we've added holidays historically for one reason or another. My objection is to the erasure of Columbus Day, which is more around exploration than the personal, um, and moral, um, stature of the person from history. I mean, I think if we go into our history books, we can find something wrong with probably every person that we have a holiday for, and if our goal is to then vilify them, we can potentially do away with a number of the holidays. So that is my, um, perspective, that it would be great to add an ordinance and have Indigenous Peoples' Day either on the same day or another day, um, but not to erase our federal holiday, and that's my position on the matter. Thank you. But we do not have legal form before us, so we cannot act on this tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Hernandez.
I think that, um, we, we have to amplify the voices here, and this is not, Columbus Day is not going to go away, it's still a federal holiday. We're just going to adopt Indigenous People's Day, and that we can proudly place it on our website, scream it at the top of our lungs, that we walk on native land, and that we, in the city of Holyoke, celebrate Indigenous People's Day, not just, the resolution already passed, the symbolic part already passed, and the directions that were taken from this same body was that it had to go through ordinance, so it looks like we're going around, and now we're hearing something else, that it has to be sent to executive order. And I think that, I mean, it's going to happen sooner or later, um, because, um, it's the only right thing to do, and we're not erasing, um, because we can never erase what Christopher Columbus did. Um, he, he claims to have discovered, and, you know, the savior of people that already existed, or people that had it right, um, so we can erase that, but we're amplifying the truth and the effects that it has caused, and still until this day, there's still injustices taking place, so I think that as a community and as a body, we can move forward, um, unifying and doing what's right and fair. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Green.
The land that we occupy is not ours, is not Indigenous people, it belongs to the Creator. We are all temporary occupants here, and we don't know how long we are going to be here, and, uh, I think that, uh, we, we have to recognize also that one of the most benevolent, charitable societies or organizations in the world is the Knights of Columbus, who have spent countless, countless hours, uh, donating, working, uh, for people across the globe, and, uh, it's a, a, a Catholic organization that is, uh, well-respected throughout, throughout the globe, and once again, like I say, this land does not belong to the native, the Indigenous people, it does not belong to the new settlers, it belongs to the Creator, and we are all temporary occupants here. Now that I've said my, my religious speech, that's the way I feel about it.
Counselor Lisi, your hand is up.
Yes, thanks so much. Um, so, number one, I do want to, um, stand corrected in that, um, it was Juneteenth that, um, was rescinded and not Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, so I want to apologize to Counselor Murphy for that mistake there. Um, I do also want to just, um, see if we can recall, I believe that when we did finally create the Juneteenth holiday, we had to do it by ordinance to allow for people to have the day off, so I think that we're following the same, um, protocol here, so there, there, there was an executive order, um, but in order for people to have the, um, day off as a paid holiday, it required the ordinance change. Uh, that, that's what I remember of the process, so, um, I would say that we, we should, um, eventually lay this on the table and wait for the legal form, because that is what the committee requested. Um, I will just say that, uh, you know, to the, to the points that are being made about, like, the vilification, and we're going to find something wrong with everyone over, over the, um, course of history, um, there, there's, the, the point of recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day is not to, um, simply say, these guys are, are, are bad guys, but it's just, it's erroneous historiography. Nothing was discovered, I mean, Columbus did not discover this place, it was inhabited by people all along, so the erasure, the erasure that happened is actually the erasure of how many thousands of years of history that took place here on this land before, uh, Columbus arrived. So that's where the erasure is, and that is what Indigenous Peoples' Day is looking to, um, rectify, in, in terms of history, like, history didn't begin when Columbus came here, history was taking place on this land for thousands of years before, um, Co- Columbus' arrival, so I think, you know, we should really just, you know, make sure that we're not claiming that, like, there, there's, you know, a vilification here, it's, it's history, it's facts, um, in, in terms of, there were people here, there was an entire civilization taking place here, um, and the erasure of history happened when, um, uh, Columbus came, and then there was an erasure of, um, people and their identities, as we heard from one of the speakers, uh, the public speakers earlier, where, um, native peoples became mixed peoples because of the invasion and, um, also the slaves that those invaders brought to, uh, these native lands, so, um, it's just about getting history right and recognizing the truth of the matter, and we're, we're in a transition point, clearly, so let's just make sure that we understand why we're doing things and get our facts straight, as opposed to replicating the, um, you know, the, the lies and myths that have been perpetuated over time. Thank you. Motion to lay this on the table.
Uh, if, if you could, one person has their hand up for the first time, Counselor
Christopher Columbus did, did discover something, right? He, he, the land was already occupied, but what he did discover was opportunity to steal, to kill. Basically, we could say the same with Hitler, right? Hitler discovered the opportunity to kill and wipe out. We, we would never celebrate Hitler Day, right? We wouldn't do that, right? Because that would be crazy, but the difference is, is that there was cameras and pictures and tons and tons of documents. Now, Christopher Columbus was ages ago pretty sure that those documents, a lot of them, have been erased, simply because we couldn't walk across a country feeling we have the right, when it was stolen to begin with. I cannot sit here and ever say I would celebrate Christopher Columbus Day, or would I ever celebrate Christopher Columbus Day, so let's put that on record, and anyone who would say, hey, let's celebrate Christopher Columbus Day, take a deep look in your heart and think about what happened in the past. We might not have it documented, but there is a lot of blood that was shed on this land, and for us to sit here and discuss this is disgusting and despicable within itself if you're going to defend Christopher Columbus Day. Thank you.
The chair has made a motion to, uh, table. Is there a second to that? Motion made and seconded to table, we're not going to, we cannot debate that, uh, the reasons for table-
I think Attorney Dagnan, um, has her hand up, though, for a question, I would draw-
Yes, yes, thank, thank you, Counselor, yes, um, I'm just want to be clear, while you're saying the legal form is not in front of you, um, I mean, the ordinance change, um, and it has to do with paid holidays, uh, I agree with Counselor Lisi on that, that was submitted, um, but is it the executive order that you're looking for? I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused, because I thought that-
I think that's why we're tabling it, because we're all confused on procedure here, procedure.
I just want to know what I should be getting to you.
We just need a legal form for paid holidays, and I, I'm going through the, the attachments here, and I'm, I'm not seeing that at the moment.
Um, on September third, on September third, there's a late communication, and it was sent, uh, with the ordinances, uh, taking out, uh, Columbus Day and putting in Indigenous Peoples' Day, and there were two sections, one of them, um, is for officers and employees generally, chapter twenty-two, and, um, so it has to do with paid holidays, and the other one was just another section, uh, it's, um, generally, uh, and that's also, it's the same thing, to, uh, strike the term Columbus Day and put in Indigenous Peoples' Day. So that's the, I can resubmit it, um, but that was what I submitted back in September.
Thank you.
So let's, let's lay it on the table and, um, have the final legal form for the next meeting, the full, next full city council meeting.
Motion is to make and second it to lay on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Uh, next part of the agenda is the finance committee reports, our vice chair of the finance committee, Peter Tomlin, will be making the, uh, committee report. Item eighteen A, was, the committee was referred in order, and in accordance with Mass General Law's section forty-four, section fifty-three A, the city council accepted the provision, provisions of the twenty twenty-one, uh, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, known as the JAG grant. It's thirty-eight thousand sixty dollars, anytime we accept the grant, we authorize the establishment of a funded order method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts, expenditures, and resources associated with the administration of said grant. The, uh, committee report recommends that the, uh, grant be, that it be adopted and accepted. Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
So moved.
Okay, this is, uh, one of the grants that we get, uh, normally, Lieutenant Hart was in here with us, um, last night, actually, um, and it's for thirty-eight thousand sixty dollars, and it's for various equipment items for the police department. Um, I'll, I'll read off most of them, I have, uh, three mobile, uh, mobile cameras in the city, um, ten, uh, computer, uh, I'm trying to read this, tra- um, towers.
Towers.
Ten computer towers, three laptops, uh, one printer, uh, copier, two label printers, four UPS batteries, um, the last two items, I, I wrote down real quick, there's two other, three other items-
Art tridge and a pear tree.
Yeah, and then, what's the last one? What's the last one?
Four, uh, four bafflers, um-
Four batteries, UPS batteries, there's two more items after that that I, um, I missed out on.
Actually, you got them all.
I got them all?
Yep.
Okay. This is, normally, we get this grant, uh, every year, and it helps the police department, uh, provide, get equipment, um, and it's, uh, something that, uh, it's a reimbursable grant, I made sure that, uh, you know, Lieutenant Hart was aware of that, um, that they keep these grants, you know, and, and keep good accounting of them, because we've had issues before with several grants that we, we lost some money on and, uh, got in the hole with our free cash, so he's aware of that, and I think most department heads are aware of that now, so, um, I think this is, this is helpful, uh, and we don't know if we're going to get it every year, but, uh, it is usually around the same amount of money each year that we get, um, for this, uh, equipment item, so.
And Lieutenant Hart did tell us that none of this has been purchased until our vote, final vote takes place and the mayor agrees with it. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Riley?
Yeah, just, uh, because I was at the meeting, but I had, as you know, I had to, I had to leave a little bit early, just, just through the chair to the vice chair, Pete, the, the mobile cameras, what, what, what was that?
They were, yeah, there, there is, the police department, they're going to have three mobile cameras, and I believe the cost was eighty-five hundred dollars, he stated. Um, the G and E helps with them, the installation, but if we do move them, I'm going to try to keep them in a spot for a certain period of times of areas that, you know, are highly, maybe drug traffic or issues with, um, in the community, that they can move them, but when they do move them, I think the installation is going to be another cost, so they may, may keep it there for like three months, six months, when they do move the mobile cameras, um, they will be another charge, uh, and I think the G and E is going to help, whether it's on a building or a pole, it doesn't necessarily have to be on a, a G and E pole, it could be on a, a side of a building, apartment, building or house, uh, where they feel deemed, uh, you know, uh, more useful.
Okay, and the mobile, Mr. Chair, the, the mobile cameras will be, what, recording the whole time?
Yeah, I believe they're recording till the, the police department, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all, all right, well, that, I, I didn't realize, it's three, we're, so we're, by this grant, we're procuring three mobile cameras, uh, to be placed wherever the chief of police, I guess, or detectives say they should go.
Right.
And they'll be monitored and, and then used for police-related purposes, I would imagine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, and then just one last thing, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. President, just to, um, just to remind ourselves, uh, with Counselor Leahy and I did a few years ago, and I don't remember it, Jimmy, when it was, but about four years ago, uh, we, uh, passed into ordinance that, that would, just following what Peter, what Counselor Solomon just, the vice chair just said, is that we, we want to, uh, we want to see the, we, you know, we pass these grants constantly, constantly passing grants, okay, great, love the free money and all the rest of that, um, but we don't always get feedback, and that's what we try to do, we, we try to get, so we pass that into ordinance, so we don't have to put that as stipulation on a grant, because it's already in ordinance, but it's good to just remind ourselves that these post-grant reports should be coming in, because you, we are all entitled to them, I'm not saying we get them all the time, but we are entitled to see all them, so if counselors are particularly interested in a grant, you, you should realize that by virtue of an ordinance, you have the right to see exactly what was received, where it was paid, and how it was zeroed out, and what Counselor Tomlin just rightly said, this is how we got into the fiasco that has been the last two fiscal years by major deficits, put aside the sewer fund, put aside, I mean, these are grants, they, they should be, you know, you know, good, good things, grants that were just lost in space, caused huge, hundreds of thousands of dollars in deficit, can you imagine? I mean, so I'm glad we have some new counselors here, uh, he- hearing this, these are grants administered under the last ten years, and I use administered in air quotes, because they weren't administered, obviously, they, they were, they were, they're just lost, and then, and then we, and we, we lost the money, and it caused huge deficits. Well, what, what does that do? That affects our free cash. We actually had a counselor here who say, well, that's a good thing, we should have no free cash. Are you out of your mind? A counselor said that, we should, that shows good val- good budget, budgeting, that does not show good budgeting, that shows horrible budgeting. We need free cash to help offset our deficits in other places and to mitigate the, uh, commercial and residential tax rate. I mean, this is very serious stuff, and I hope you're all, it's more or less hearing it, but you didn't hear it just from me, you heard it from Counselor Tomlin, and you're, you're going to hear it from Counselor McGivern, I know, multiple times, because he always talks about this, and Counselor Leahy, so, so it's just something, just to keep, please keep, uh, your eye on the ball as you go forward. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to pass the first reading, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made and seconded to pass the second reading. If there's no further discussion, the court could call the roll for vote, yes, you're voting in favor of accepting the, the, uh, Byrne, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, if you vote no, you're voting against accepting it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Leahy? Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Ananmas.
By your vote, you've adopted the acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Annual Grant. Uh, item eighteen B is also from the Committee on Finance. With everybody's permission, I'm gonna do an abbreviated reading and explain it, and I'm sure the Vice Chair will give all the details necessary. If not, I will read it all. Um, the total of the, of the total of the requests here is, and this was introduced by, by then-Mayor, uh, Mayor Murphy, that we bond seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the War Memorial replacement of the roof, and twenty-thousand dollars for speed humps on the vicinity of Michigan Avenue, as discussed earlier this evening. Whenever we adopt as a legislative body the ability to uh allow the Mayor, in this case, it will be Mayor Garcia, and the City Treasurer to borrow the cost for these projects. There's a clause in, in the, in the, uh, all of our, our request for bonding that'd be, there's, there shall be no change in the purpose of this bond authorized without a prior vote or approval by the Hoyouk City Council. We approve the original bond. No one can change the bond language while we are, you know, down the road without coming back to us. So by accepting this this evening, we, we would be adopting this language. Uh, the Committee did recommend that. And our Vice Chair, who does an excellent job of paying attention, is gonna make the Committee report. It does require a first reading.
I'll make a motion, the, uh, to adopt the Committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion made, second to adopt the Committee report and pass the first reading. Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, we've had, uh, on, uh, Zoom, we had Bob Parent in here, um, last night, and uh he spoke of the, uh, the War Memorial, um, the order says replacement. It's actually the roof replacement of the War Memorial. I think that's the way the reading is that Counselor President McGivern has. Um, is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and twenty-thousand dollars for the installation of two speed humps on Michigan Avenue. Um, the roof is in very, very dire need, um, at the War Memorial. Um, Chris Sims, who is the, uh, the Chairman of the War Memorial Commission, stated that they actually have a, uh, a bucket brigade, actually, where, when it really is a heavy rain. There's areas that they have to have these blue tarps out there to collect the water. And he also stated that, um, the damage that's coming down through the walls, there's actually standing water in the basement where the old, um, you know, Council of Aging was, uh, in the, um, where the Auxiliary Police, I believe, are, are stationed. Um, this roof would last for thirty years. Um, Bob stated that it would probably start, uh, next year in the spring or summer. It would probably take about sixty days to complete. Uh, we have a, a Supreme Roofing Company came in to give us the, uh, the estimate. Um, and then now we'll just have to wait for the, uh, the cost of the, uh, the, the materials, of course, could go up um a little bit, but he stated that, uh, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars should be enough money with, uh, I believe they gave a fifteen percent contingency, um, for the cost of that. Um, this roof will last for thirty years, and there's, there's a guarantee for that. And if there's any issues, that whoever is doing the roof will be able to come in there and take care of the situation. But for the great building that we have, that is, uh, you know, well over, probably, well, sixty, seventy years old, um, and the, the utilization that we could be using with that, uh, it's really important, just as our schools that we've gotten new roofs with bonding, that we take care of this bonding, uh, for this, uh, really, uh, gem of the city, the, the War Memorial, so. Um, if there's any questions, I'll, I'll give you some more info. I think that's, basically sums it up.
Thank you, Counselor Tomlin. Uh, Counselor Murphy, and then Counselor Grainey.
Yeah, I just, uh, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, Mike Falsetti, who was the first person to brought this to my attention. But I also wanna thank Hispanic Ferreira, Chris Sims, they also brought it to my attention. And I wanna thank Bob Parent for being able to get, uh, a roofing company to come in and give us an estimate free of charge. Obviously, they would like to get the business, I'm sure, but they, they provided. All, all indicators are, if we ignore it, we're gonna have significant millions of dollars of repairs that are gonna be needed and or a, a building that's gonna be in serious jeopardy. Uh, so, you know, I, I'm very pleased that, uh, the Finance Committee approved the bond last night, and I hope the Council will tonight. And that next spring, early summer, we'll have that building back with a roof that's sealed, and that we now can verify that we're gonna be able to keep the internal parts of the building in the shape that a war memorial monument should be, so. Thank you.
Counselor Grainey?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanna go on record as supporting this project. The War Memorial Building is a beautiful building. It's one of the centerpieces of our downtown area, and it's something we should all support. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
I'd also urge everyone to approve this bond. Once, once a roof starts to leak, the damage to different systems in the building and different components just accelerates a, at an exponential rate.
Counselor Riley?
Yeah, I, I wanna, uh, also go on record to, to support this. I wanna thank Acting Mayor Murphy for including the, uh, speed humps in the bond authorization, uh, on Michigan Avenue. It's, it's, as we discussed earlier, that's vital. I also wanna point out that what we learned last night in Finance Committee was this is not a new phenomenon. It's, it was me that dubbed this the Bucket Brigade, because that's the way it was just, it just really, it's almost La- Laugh Olympics, talking about what's, what they're doing up there at, in the roof, uh, in, in the, in the top floor, be- because of leaking the roof. Uh, this is not a new phenomenon either. This has been, was going on since at least the summer of twenty-twenty, but we all know that there was some other pressing things, and the former mayor wasn't able to attend to it. Um, of course, we know that he didn't do that much, because he was, uh, basically a no-show mayor for the last two years. Um, I would also point out that, that, that there was provided last night to Finance Committee a debt statement, that, uh, it is my hope that all of us have this, but, uh, I'm gonna suggest that we probably, all of us don't probably have it. But you should procure a copy from the City Auditor. And you, you're gonna learn a lot about the city, city finances going forward, if you care to take a little time to read it. The last point is, uh, Mr. President, is that I think is very important, not only that we take care of the roof, but the condition of the four walls of that building, with so many historic quotes along the, the perimeter of the, uh, building, just have to be preserved for, forever. And, uh, the condition of the limestone is not something that I think is optimal. And it's my hope that we're gonna do something about that through ARPA funds, uh, going forward. And, uh, because we, we know we're gonna get another sizable amount at some point, I believe, next year. And if, if, and, and we, and we know, Mr. President, that speaking to, um, the War Memorial Commissioners uh in the past, they wanna use a lot, utilize that building a lot more than it's used. And it really is, as other speakers have said, like, just, uh, quite an asset for, for the, the community. I mean, we've been to, seen Mikhail Bryshnikov there, of all people, if you can believe that, that happened. And that didn't happen eighty years ago. It happened ten years ago. And we have a amazing room, uh, to honor the Medal of Honor winners. If you've never had the opportunity to go into that room, I strongly encourage you to take, uh, take twenty minutes and walk around that, that room. It's, it's spectacular. And all the beautiful paraphernalia that have been accumulated over the course of time by the War Memorial Commissioners. They should be credited. So that building has to be, has to be preserved and has to be utilized more. And, and, and having this roof replacement, as, as Mike just said, i- it's gonna go a long way to preserving the building. And, uh, I think we all should, uh, support it. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi?
Uh, thank you. I just wanna say that I'm, I'm happy to support the bonding this evening. I definitely think that, um, as other Councillors have stated, it's of vital importance to, um, secure the roof, make sure that no further damage to the building is done. It's a, it's a piece of our history, and it, and it's a beautiful building. And, uh, I do, I do wanna say that, uh, I think that the building could and should be utilized to a far greater extent. I think that there is an opportunity for revenue streams here, um, in terms of renting out the space. Um, and I, I just want to highlight for the War Memorial Commissioners that, that I think that, uh, a more active role needs to be played in, um, making sure that the community knows that that space is available. And then, um, you know, making the, the space, um, accessible for folks. Um, I, I think that there has been an interest in, in using, um, the space, but it hasn't. The, I don't think the Commissioners have made it, um, easily accessible for the public. And I think, you know, again, given that there is a potential revenue stream here to secure, um, the building and shore up the building with those monies, um, we should be utilizing it more and, and, and utilizing the revenue stream that comes along with it. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I, I agree. We need to definitely bond for this. Um, first of all, let, let's look at the preservation aspect of it. It's a building that recognizes, um, our veterans. But one thing that I want to mention, that I, I believe Counselor Sullivan brought up, it's how much it's gonna cost if we don't handle this now, the repair. But what I really wanna bring to everybody, everyone's attention is the fact that when a building undergoes a lot of damage because of water, the air quality in that building also becomes a problematic. So if we have veterans walking into this, not just veterans, people walking into this building, we're looking at the air quality. Um, water can produce mold. Um, we all know that. And so it's just not preservation. It's also health. And I, I think we definitely need to address this immediately. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading. If there's no further discussion, the Court could call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar bond, as stated. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Ananmas.
By your vote, you've adopted-
But yes.
Thank you.
Lisi's, Lisi was skip, but yes, so yes, unanimous.
Got it.
Sorry.
Um, by your vote, you've adopted the bond. Item eighteen C, also from the Committee on Finance, that there be hereby is appropriated by transfer. One hundred, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, seventy-five-thousand dollars from line item known as Patrolman, a hundred-thousand dollars from E-nine-one-one dispatcher. This total is going into a line item known as overtime. Committee report recommends that the, uh, transfer adopt, be adopted under discussion, I'm sorry, pass the first reading, under discussion. Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, this is, uh, Lieutenant Hart. Uh, we had him last night on, uh, Zoom. Um, they're short on their, uh, overtime money. Um, they've been working about thirty-eight thousand a pay period, I believe. Um, they're taking seventy-five thousand from Patrolman. I think they have like, uh, two, two or three openings. So there's some funding there until, you know, next year. And they're taking a hundred thousand from E-nine-one-one dispatchers. And Lieutenant Hart stated that, uh, some of that money, um, some of the dispatchers are covered by a grant. I think, I believe it's a PSAB grant. So I asked him if, uh, with the twelve, I think he has either eleven or twelve dispatchers, um, taking this money would affect their pay in the next, um, seven, eight months till the end of June, and he said it wouldn't, that there would be enough money to cover the, the paper, the dispatcher, so. Um, if there's any questions, uh, any of my, my, to give me, or any of my, uh, committee members can follow up with that.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, this is, uh, I met with the Chief and Lieutenant Hart, and, uh, the hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand is, especially with the fact that new Councillors are coming on, uh, was to provide enough funding so that the Police Department could get through January without having to come in during the first month, uh, and request a transfer. So they're approximately, they've spent less as of October twenty-seventh than they, or October twentieth, as, than they did last year at the same time, by about six or seven thousand dollars. They're down to about thirty-five thousand a month or a, a pay period for overtime. Uh, and so that's what they basically did. They took five more pay periods at this hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And the dispatcher is a grant, so they're, they're not gonna be negatively affected. And we are still trying to get more patrol officers. We just hired ten, but there's, you know, more vacancies that are gonna be occurring, so. Uh, they, they definitely have the funding there, but that was the attempt so that they didn't have to have an emergency and where we really need to have overtime, and we didn't have the funding there, and they couldn't do it, so.
And just, I would just add, cause I, Counselor Tomlin, very thorough, and I thank you. There, we're up to eighty-nine police officers. Eight of them are in the academy right now, because they're part of the new hieroese. Therefore, they're not available for duty, and that's part of what the overtime is, uh, helps replace, you know, to keep all our patrol cars and all our, our neighborhoods on the, uh, on the same schedule. And the, the amount of reserves, you know, Counselor Murphy, is incredibly low. I mean, we, we've authorized to go up, uh, I think we just changed it to up to like twenty-something. And we, we, we don't even have two reserves right now. And, uh, it's, it's a commentary, I think, on the, uh, lack of, uh, of, uh, motivation to, uh, to go into, uh, into this, uh, type of, uh, uh, position, I guess. I'm trying to think of the right words. But it's, it's just, you know, and, and the fact that they're, they're down below the average of overtime is a testament, I think, to our new Chief of Police and to, uh, to, uh, the people who are managing the, uh, the officer's time too. But with that in mind, is there any other discussion? If not, motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading. If there's no further discussion, Court could call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Abstained.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Eleven years, one abstained.
By your vote, you've adopted the transfer. Uh, for our Councillors-elect, we are allowed to abstain if we have a personal conflict or an immediate family member, a personal conflict as a, as an elected official. That's the only time that we can abstain, otherwise we're required to take votes. Item eighteen E, Committee on Finance, eighteen D, the Committee on Finance, transferred in order to transfer three-thousand dollars from pay local building inspector into overtime. Motion to-
Motion to adopt the Committee report and pass the first reading.
Adopt the Committee report, pass the first reading. Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, um, we had the, uh, the Building Commissioner in, Damian Cody, um, on the, uh, Zoom last night. Um, they're looking at, uh, transferring from some money. They, um, I believe they're short a building inspector, and of course, at the work that has to get done. Um, as his job, he's the, uh, Department Head, he doesn't get overtime, but the building inspector has been able to have to go out to do extra, actually, extra, um, inspections. Um, and this money is taken from his, from Mr. Cody, stated that they're having trouble hiring a building inspector, especially maybe because of the salary, um, or nobody, you know, wants to work at that, that rate. So there's extra money in that, that one line item, uh, the five-one-one-one-zero. Um, and they're taking that to put into, to help pay the, the building inspector that is actually there, um, the money that he's been doing extra work, uh, inspecting, you know, the different buildings and different, uh, places that they have to inspect. So the, it's taking from one to another, and it's because there's extra money in that, in that line item, um, the building inspector line item.
Thank you, Counselor Tomlin. Is there any discussion on the motion to pass the first reading? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading. If there's no further discussion, the Court could call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Bang.
Abstained. She abstained.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Eleven years, one abstained.
By your vote, you've adopted the transfer. Uh, the Chair would take a personal privilege to, uh, recognize Counselor Anderson Burgos, who just, uh, brought, I think, to our attention that a, why, can you, can you let us know?
It's, uh, with a sad heart, um, I have to, um, announce that, uh, Michael Susiano passed away tonight.
And Counselor Burgos has asked that we have a moment of silence for Mike. Thank you. Very, um, very sad, very appropriate though to let us know. Appreciate it. I just feel like that moment is not enough.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, I, I just, let me say something. I, human, like, human interaction, I don't look at politics, religion, or anything. I look at the, the person in front of me, and I- I look at the, the person in front of me, and I've met Michael quite a few times and, and had in-depth conversations with him. He was human, he was a person. And so when someone goes, i- it really takes a toll, you know, especially on, on family and, and friends, but for me especially, because I know that if I ever, that's why I try to always make peace with people, you know? So thank you for allowing me.
Appreciate it, yeah. And, uh, there's no question that, uh, any conversation you had with Michael was always energized.
Mr. President?
Counselor Green?
Just a, uh, quick, uh, I've known Mike for thirty years. He was, uh, at UMass with my son, Michael, uh, he's been at a few parties at our house and things like that, and, uh, this is crushing news. I feel terrible.
Item eighteen E, also from the Committee on Finance, is a request for a transfer of twenty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars from heavy motor equipment operator to supplies, traffic lines.
Motion to, uh, adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion made a second to adopt the committee report to pass the first reading, Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, we had, uh, Bob Perrin and, uh, Amy Shinowski, who was our new DPW, uh, acting director, um, on Zoom last night. Um, we have some bills that have to be paid for the traffic lines, uh, supplies for the paint and, and the contracting of the lines. It's taking, uh, twenty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars from heavy, heavy motor equipment operator, which I believe they have about three openings. Um, it's again, another difficult position to fill. Um, maybe my colleague, Mr. Sullivan, could explain why, uh, talked about it last night, uh, it's, it's not a, really for someone to get, I think it's, what, it's forty-seven thousand for that type of, uh, job, um, it's not really a high-paying job, and they're having difficulty, you know, hiring people. So there is extra money in that position, and, uh, like I said, they have a contract for the traffic lines. He also stated that when they paint the lines, uh, originally we had them, seems like they're repainting them every three years, and we're trying to look at it where you can do it possibly every year and a half, that's something, we'll be ongoing talk with, uh, the DPW commissioners, uh, because a lot of these markings, these roads, uh, crosswalks and, and middle yellow lines, uh, get faded out really quickly. Um, so we're gonna look at possibly doing it, uh, instead of every two and, every two and a half to three years, maybe every other year, um, to make it safer for the, uh, people in the city.
Thank you, Counselor Tomlin, is there any other discussion? Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, and e- especially for our new counselors here, one, one of the things you'll see as you go through the budget process, and you'll wanna keep an eye on these things, w- we've got the excess in this line item, because there, there's not enough money there to hire qualified people. We're not competitive wi- with what's out there in the market right now. Heavy equipment operators are at a premium, um, and you'll see a lot of this will tie back to issues like Dean Tech, but I, I, I won't get into that. What, what, what happens here also, um, i- it's what you can call penny wise, pound foolish, because we're not competing, we, we haven't hired the people, the money, the, the, the money's there to transfer for, for doing these street markings and lines, but it's being done now at prevailing wage, all right? So, a- and we're hiring an outside contractor. So we're, we're paying two, maybe three, maybe four times as much as we should to get this work done also, if, if we were doing it ourselves. And be- because we're not competitive in some of these positions now, so.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bartley?
Uh, just the one other point we re- raised last night, Mr. President, uh, relative to this, is that, that we're taking money out of personnel line items to pay for supplies.
Supplies, yep.
That, that is not a way to budget. Normally, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it in support of this, but once again, we have another acting department head, so this was sent to us by the former department head, and now we have the acting department head, who, she's trying to do her best, and, and we, and we understand that, and, and so consequently, I will, I will vote for this tonight, but this is, this is not a way to run a budget. So, and the budget was prepared in consultation with the whole DPW, let's, let's just leave it there, the DPW administration, so i- i- it wasn't prepared, um, w- well enough for the amount of time that they have, uh, in, in my opinion, uh, that's not being mean, it's just being realistic, that we have, we have to do better going forward. So it's my hope that whomever is hired as DPW superintendent, whether it's in-house or out, out of house, or out, out, out of town, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna do that now, i- i- that we'll get somebody who can, really knows a lot about administering a pretty tough department to handle, and then running a multi-million dollar budget that changes quite a bit. So there's gonna be a lot on the plate of the new mayor, and who's gotta get his arms around this stuff very quickly. So let's, let's hope that, let's hope for all our sakes that this, that this can happen, because, a- and a last point, Mr. President, is that I, I think this just goes again to the importance of city council oversight and review, and city council independence. So I just think that something, is something imperative to, to consider going forward, that we, that we have a voice here, and, and we need to maintain an arm's length from other department heads, so that we can properly review and comment upon them, and then, and work with them to, to find solutions. This is not about, you know, casting aspersions or criticizing or being critical, that's, that's not, that's not the game we're in, we're, we're, we're in the game to help Holy Oak move forward. The only way we're gonna do that is if we pull, all pull together, and I think we can do that, and, uh, I hope we will. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just wanna b- briefly state that I, I agree with Counselor Bartley a hundred percent, that we have to work together in this with the, with the new mayor, um, I got a chance to try, a lot of times I go out and, um, they pick up my trash or yard waste, everybody's picking up leaves and barrels, and they're putting them out there, and the guys came by today, and I, I always try to offer water or something, a little bit chilly today, but water or soda or something, and, uh, you know, the guy had my ear for about five or ten minutes, and, and, and they're really, these guys are overworked, I mean, they work hard, I mean, sometimes we don't realize the amount of work they do, and if you got a transitional workforce where people aren't there all the time, the people that are left working are really overworked, they're doing a lot, and they're being told, you gotta keep moving, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, and, um, there, I, I, I feel that, that it, we gotta look to these employees, and, and, and I think sometimes we take things for granted when they pick up our trash, or recycling, or they paint that crosswalk, or they put the sign up, um, these are some of the hardest working department people in, in the city, employees in the city. So I think in, in the future, we have to really think about how we're treating our employees, and how we're keeping them safe, and, um, you know, I, I, I think, uh, with the new person coming at the DPW, I think all of us have to look to them and, and try to, you know, somebody with some really good management skills, and somebody that's really gonna take care of the employees, because they really work hard, and, uh, I, I appreciate what the work they do every day, and sometimes I think a lot of us, you know, take it for granted, they're just gonna be there, they pick up our trash, they pick up our leaves, you know, they, they paint the crosswalks, um, but they really are some of the hardest working employees, and sometimes they just don't get the, the accolades or the credit that they, I think they deserve.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna echo that by what, what Pete just said, uh, Mr. President, so it's not just, and, and now they're gonna be plowing our streets, right, I mean, eh, all, all hours of the day, so it's, it's a tough job, so, uh, one of the things that, that, that the mayor, uh, from the nineties, who did, he combined all those departments under Public Works. Well, maybe that needs, maybe the time is now to reconsider some of those decisions, and take, you know, I, I'm not saying we have to all be in silos, but, I mean, but we can, you know, perhaps we can consider having, giving some department some independence and some authority, and, you know, for parks, for example, would, would, would not be a bad way to start, and that might allow a new DPW superintendent to focus on what he or she is really good at, which is, which is, besides the parks. So th- that, that might be, that might be a, a good way, a good way to start. Uh, I don't know that to be true, um, you know, money solves a lot of things, although it's not the root of, uh, uh, it's not the cure-all for everything, but, but let's see what happens. We, we did hear some good news, Mr. President, as if I just, uh, just from, uh, the outgoing assessor, um, relative to what's gonna happen with, uh, potentially what's gonna happen with, uh, with, with free cash for this year, so it looks like we might, after a three-year break, uh, might actually have free cash, but, but we'll see, so hopefully that'll, that'll set the new mayor off on a, on a, on a good, on a, on, on solid footing, and, and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just a couple of things, uh, I, I had prior in the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with the Board of Public Works, we've already met with the Parks Commission, and, and the c- the concept of potentially putting parks back into recreation and, and forestry, uh, both in terms of having a, a dedicated service to maintaining the parks, which we've had difficulty, because people get pulled from parks to go do other things. Uh, so that i- is something that originally was questionable, the last couple of weeks, there has been somewhat a much more favorable view of looking at that, and I would encourage the, the council to work with the new mayor to potentially look at what can be done to take some of the pressure off, cause there's nine different budgets that the DPW superintendent has to deal with. And when you're pulling from this budget to take care of that budget, and then you got people here that aren't able to get the job done, it leads to ineffective service in a variety of areas in order to handle one. And just one other thing, and it goes along with what Co-, uh, Counselor Tomlin brought up in terms of trying to protect, uh, employees, uh, with the arper money, we are buying new, uh, wheeled trash barrels that'll be picked up by the vehicles themselves, so that we should have fewer workers' comp claims, we should have a cleaner environment and, and, uh, trash not being around the streets, so those things have all, all been discussed, uh, in the last, uh, month, month and a half, and, and I do think that looking at, uh, changing some of the things that are under the DPW does make sense. Thank you.
This is where the chair, who should've, uh, woke him up about two minutes ago and said, let's get back to the transfer. Cause boy, do we get off on a t- a good tangent, but a tangent. On the transfer, motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made a second to pass the second reading. If there's no further discussion, a clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Ananmas.
By your vote, you have adopted the transfer. We've already heard from DGR and Charter and Rules, Public Safety, Public Service, and Joint, the Joint City Council and School Committee have no reports. I know each of those committees have scheduled meetings, uh, between now and the end of the year. It moves on to the almost last part of our agenda, it's called motions, orders, and resolutions. There is no rule that says you cannot debate, discuss, or talk about any one of these items, but there's some common sense that says, if the motion is go to committee, let it go to committee, and we'll discuss it in committee, then we can debate it when it comes back out of committee like we just did all these fine committee reports. Item twenty-four, introduced by Counselor Leahy.
Receive, adopt, and set up for the next meeting?
Motion made a second to receive that the Hoyok City Council give a proclamation to Hoyok Sporting Goods owner Betsy Frey, as rec- as recognized by the Connoisseur Massachusetts, that Hoyok Sporting Goods is an outstanding woman-owned small business. Motion is receive, adopt, and set up for a next or future meeting to present that proclamation. Counselor Leahy?
Counselor, uh, Bartley's name to it as well.
Counselor Bartley, added.
Just very quickly, uh, I, I, you know, not only because of myself, and, you know, growing up playing sports, but my three children, I spent a lot of time at Hoyok Sporting Goods, and, uh, it's always a great conversation to be had with her, and her father's a good man as well, but I just wanna say congratulations, and let's set it up for the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. President? I think Dad's gotta be even proud of this one. Counselor Sullivan? And Counselor Gray, uh, Counselor Grainey added to the order. Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Added, would everybody like to be added? Is there any objection?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Yes, please.
Sounds good.
Counselor Lisi, thank you.
Counselor who?
Counselor Lisi.
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 I'm doomed!
I lose the election two weeks ago, and I'm already forgotten.
Oh, no, that's been, that's been a while, for a while now.
Oh, boy.
Counselor, uh, Counselor Pr- Counselor Tomlin?
Yes, it's, Jim, I'll never forget, it's always Leahy to me, okay? So don't worry about it.
Thank you, Peter, appreciate that.
Just a correction, I, I think, I believe the, the spell, it's just a spelling error, I believe it's, uh, Frey, F-R-U-Y. I went to school with her husband, Bruce.
Thank you.
Believe, yeah, so it should be F-R-U-Y, and not F-R-Y-E.
Okay, we, we will correct, we will correct that.
Thank you.
Counselor, former Counselor Devine just heard that message, right? Any further discussion on the motion to adopt? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Item thirty, um, twenty-five, we already did, item twenty-six.
Refer to public safety?
Motion made a second to receive by Counselor McGee, that the Public Safety invite the Water Department to discuss, address the water issues on Michelle Lane. Motion refer to Committee on Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Item twenty-seven, introduced by Counselor McGee. City engineer review and determine if a four-way stop sign can be placed at Fairfield-
Public Safety?
In Nanituck. Motion received, refer to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Item twenty-eight, introduced by Counselor McGee-
Public Service.
-that the City Council appoint a new assessor. Motion received, refer to the Committee on Public Service, with, uh, communication through the chair to our Human Resource Personnel Director.
Who is that?
Um, when we have one, to, uh, do some good advertising.
All right.
On that motion, any other discussion? This is important. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Item twenty-nine, introduced by Counselor McGee. City Amendment Ordinance two sixty-nine, by striking G two from the ordinance, the section states that no employee shall s- of the city shall simultaneously serve on the city council during their time of employment.
Motion to go to ordinance?
Motion made a second, received, refer to Committee on Ordinance. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Please, thank you. Um, I wanna speak to this because, to my knowledge, there are at least three counselors elect that are currently considered employees of the city, and so they have from now till the day that we all get sworn in to make their choices, and if there is a conflict, to cure the conflict in whichever way they choose. Now, there may be other counselors elect that are city employees in one form or another. I don't know everybody's employment status, but I'm just personally aware of three, so, um, my hope is that they'll make the choices that are best for them and for Holy Oak, um, and that we can move forward. But I think it's very late in the game to be sitting here changing a local law that we all voted for in twenty seventeen, that the mayor vetoed, and we overrode his veto, eleven to four, and the maker of this order was part of the vote to override the veto. And the maker of this order was part of the vote to override the veto. So I'm very puzzled by the fact that he's even filed this order, and I'm equally troubled by the fact that he isn't here to speak to it. Thank you.
And a motion to go to committee, Counsel O'Brien Martinez.
I'd like to ask a question, if somebody can refresh my mind, because is a stipend also considered, like, for example, I know that there's been counselors and also a staff member in the city that participated, like, being, like, I believe it was for the football coaching or had a role, and it was a member of our body back when I, about several years ago. This person was voted in by us to allow him to do the role. And I remember, was that a stipend? Is it a stipend of ours considered the same?
It's a special employee, special employee, not amendment Gladys, but it's, you see it a lot in the schools, where coaches and our teachers are coaches, guidance counselors are coaches.
Yeah, but this person also was serving on our board, is what I'm trying to explain.
No, I understand.
So that this person was getting a stipend. We had a second person, which was a task collector. I remember him coming forward here, and we had an issue somewhat being debated. So I'm a little bit kind of puzzled about the situation because whatever stipend is still a stipend. We, you know, we're not rich getting rich out of this sitting here for sixteen years that I've given you. I didn't become rich here. Just getting that sense of understanding for myself because now I'm walking away like, hmm, we had two individuals who got stipends through the time that they sat in our, you know, they served in or worked in the cities, is what I'm trying to say. So just if anybody remembers that, help me kind of figure that out because I do recall that the person we saw, we voted them in, so, thank you.
And motion to go to committee, Counsel Greeney.
Just quickly, the way this ordinance is written, it actually means that the chief of police could be a member of the city council.
And a motion to go to committee, any further discussion?
Second.
We're not going to argue going to committee, right?
No.
All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Chair will ask the vice chair to help out, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven.
Make a motion to all go to finance.
Motion made second to suspend rules to take up items thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven and refer to the committee on finance.
If you had a reading, please.
Very abbreviated, if everybody's okay with that. The first one's a little interesting, sub funds from the gas and electric and enter into an escrow agreement to pay off a 2012 general obligation bond. Thirty-one is nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars from computer, a transfer request from computer services to professional consulting, and that's some bills that were not paid at the end of the fiscal year that need to be paid this year. We'll skip thirty-two for a second. Thirty-three is a principal clerk, one thousand five hundred to overtime. Thirty-four is motor equipment repairman, eleven thousand eight hundred to overtime. Thirty-five is twenty-six thousand four hundred, heavy equipment, motor equipment to refuse other services. Thirty-six is a power shovel operator, eleven thousand two hundred to property maintenance and demo worker. Thirty-seven is a number of items totaling one oh seven five hundred in the DPW budget for heavy equipment, parking control, and maintenance. Two, repair and maintenance in several buildings within the city. And each of these items will be referred to the committee on finance. If there's no discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thirty-two is a request of transfer from the fire department budget, four thousand five oh three salary, seventy-four cents salary line item into a line item known as injured on duty.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and pass the first reading.
Motion made second to suspend rules to pass the first reading this evening. Counsel Domon.
Yeah, this is something we normally do for firefighters or police. I don't have the number, Council President could see the number, that we normally do this during the pay periods, I believe it might be, I don't know, maybe two or three firefighters, Council President.
It has been running at one kind of long-term and two, I don't have it, I'm sorry, but it's been running about two or three.
Okay. And this is something we normally do so that it goes from their account into the injured on duty account. It's something we passed a few years ago so we can see the transfers of the money going from one department to the same person, but an accounting of it that actually we have to vote on.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion made second to pass the first reading. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second.
Motion made second to pass the second reading. If there's no further discussion, a court could call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of this transfer. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
Gabriel Martinez.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Greeney.
Yes.
Unanimous.
By your vote, you've adopted the transfer. Item thirty-eight, introduced by Counsel Murphy, is a handicap sign, twenty-four Hands Street to be removed.
Ordinance.
Motion made second to receive for the committee on ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-nine, introduced by Counsel Bacon. The city council will, that city councilors will attend city council and city council committee meetings in person. Exceptions can be made by remote attendance by the city council president and or committee chair as long as the chair and a quorum is present in person.
Mr. President, I do wish to speak to this because it was addressed in the public speak.
Can we just refer Charter and Rules? Motion.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer Charter and Rules. Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. Since it was brought up at public speak, I do wish to speak to this. And I will note that I am a nurse. I have worked during the entire COVID pandemic and practiced safe practice during that pandemic. We are now all sitting here in the chambers except for a select few who have chosen not to be here. The nature of my order is to keep those who have concerns and risk protected and having the ability to continue to meet remotely since there are still incidences and some increases in the COVID in our community. However, I think that we've all experienced a serious decline in civility during the Zoom episodes. We have experienced episodes that we've never, ever experienced in the chambers, and a majority of us are here by choice and feeling that we can either be protected by the environment that's created around us or by our personal ability to wear a mask. So I strenuously object to anything being cruel or mean or endangering anyone by this order that I have filed. I am simply looking for us to resume a natural and normal order of business, which is generally happening throughout our community, to the happiness of most of us. So thank you for indulging me in my comments, and I look forward to discussing this more thoroughly in committee.
Mr. President?
Counsel Bartley?
I'm going to indulge in my comment for one second too, under discussion, so I appreciate what the War Five Counselor said. I remember several months ago, my ethics were allegedly attacked. No one stood up for me in this body, not one person. And it's okay, I handled it myself. But I lost my cool a little bit, but we invited the gentleman to come in, never did. I might have said something that was a little bit out of line, but it was pretty hurtful. So I want, I'm going to stand up for Linda tonight regardless of what somebody says on a Zoom meeting. You know, we have to sit here and take it. We don't get to respond to them generally, even though attacking a counselor by name? I remember what happened a few months ago when the acting mayor broke down in a meeting because of comments several of us made. There were, that was a pretty emotional meeting, Mr. President. I didn't say anything, and I'm ashamed of myself for not saying anything. I wish I had because it was an unfortunate comment. Now, I think all those bridges have been mended, but what was said tonight in a Zoom meeting? It's improper. That should be regulated and stopped cold. It shouldn't even be repeated. What that gentleman said about me and alleging my ethics, questioned my ethics, and never backed it up, and I had people doubting me, and then when I defended myself, no one else stood up for me. Now, I'm not crying about it, but that's an historic fact. We need to do better. I, and I will start with me. Thank you.
Motion on a force to go to committee, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item forty, introduced by Counsel Anderson Burgos, that the city engineer worked with the Public Safety Committee to discuss and attempt to mitigate traffic concerns near Ridgewood and Summit intersection that are concerns for residents particularly during winter months. A constituent stated that the community field gates were open and vehicles exit onto Summit and turn onto Ridgewood, visibility going up and down that hill is marginal with the potential of a tragic incident. This was a request to add a caution signage or even a stop sign at the exit.
Public safety or send to public safety and invite the city engineer.
Motion made second to refer to committee on public safety. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-one, introduced by Counsel Bartley. Charter and rules to the city council review on whether or not the city clerk should be appointed. Motion to refer to committee on Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-two, introduced by Counsel Bartley. Ordinance. Motion made second to receive that the policy being implemented of any city vehicle, including police cars, may be rented for non-city related businesses. Refer to committee on ordinance. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-three, introduced by Counsel Bartley.
Finance.
Audit report to the city council collection of efforts of the police work, extra police work details. Committee on finance. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-four, introduced by Counsel Bartley. City council and mayor and the law department, the J and J settlement agreement see attached and vote to approve joining as this will provide the needed funds to fight the opioid crisis.
Just a finance copy to the mayor by any discussion?
Committee on finance with a copy to the mayor.
Yeah.
Counsel Bartley?
And through the chair to the former acting mayor? I was all excited to read about this, and again, MMA, and I did attach this, hopefully it got through what's going on, but through the chair to, Terry, are we, did we apply for this?
Yes, I've signed it already.
Okay, so.
And we should be getting approximately forty-five thousand dollars a year for eighteen years.
This is, this is fantastic news. And this is, this is just from the, those creeps at, whatever company, J and J. So, so this is their, you know, they all cashed out. Don't, I don't feel bad for the J and J people, but they all cashed out, made a lot of money. But this is a billions of dollars settlement that the AG, and they all fought for it, and all of them across the country, and now I'm glad that the former acting mayor was on point on this. So maybe we could just have a very short brief discussion, Terry, in finance, just to bring us, bring us some of the good news. So this is forty-five thousand dollars every year for eighteen years to the city to fight the crisis, and that's, that's good. Thank you.
Counsel Greeney?
Yes, I just want to say that, you know, this is excellent news. In fact, when this first happened, I filed an order that the city of Hoyoke sues the pharmaceutical companies.
You sure did.
And I was working in the pharmaceutical companies at the time. Those got a little awkward, but so I'm glad it all worked out. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? And motion to refer to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Suspend rules to take forty-five, and these are under my name, so this is not me going crazy. So forty-five, six, and seven, put as a package and ship those off to ordinance, please.
Motion made second to suspend rules to take forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven, introduced by Counsel Bartley. Request for speed humps at Fenton Street, McIntosh Terrace, and Memorial Drive. Receive, refer to committee on ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And the last one to ordinance and to the Disabilities Commission, please, under my name.
Item forty-eight, introduced by Counsel Bartley, is a handicap sign placed at one oh seven Brown Ave. Motion is refer to committee on ordinance with a copy to the Disabilities Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We do have three late files.
Yes.
Three. Mr. President? Point of order? Counsel Greeney and Counsel Bacon.
Just point of order, just to go on the record, that some of these assaults, verbal assaults that are being taken by Zoom onto our city councilors are very resentful and we, there should be a rule or regulation that the chair immediately stop it from happening if people are going to do this on Zoom. Once again, I've been assaulted or attacked verbally on Zoom, and it doesn't leave a very good taste in my mouth, and we're kind of sick of it. It's about time we got civil here and we talk to each other in good tones, and the people who are coming on Zoom are actually in this meeting, and they should be civil as well. Thank you.
It's a good point, and I think in terms of Zoom bombs, procedurally, it's not always that easy to mute out, but our administrative assistant let me know before the meeting that he has changed some things in terms of the Zoom administration and is able to mute that type of, the Zoom bomb that's obviously doesn't belong before us. I call them Zoom bombs, but Counsel Bacon and Counsel Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want, I want to make a point under personal privilege. What that person did on the Zoom meeting tonight is just a minor little taste of the nastiest, dirtiest city council campaign that was run this year, where this document named, naming many people that were elected and one person who was reelected to our city council, that was created by anonymous person or persons, distributed throughout the city, two people identified, John Epstein and Glenn Sullivan, as distributing them. And by this point in time, and actually three weeks before the election, everybody in this room knew it was going around the city anonymously funded by who, written by who, and I'm listening to people calling for unity and diversity? Well, is it only if I agree with you or you agree with me? I call that hypocrisy. And for it to be continued tonight on the Zoom, the same vilification that continued then, and for a sitting counselor, my colleague, to remain silent about it and not call it out for the uncivil bullying behavior that it is, I ask every elected person to call this out with the people that you associate with. To remain silent in the face of this trash is to acquiesce to it. It is to agree with it. Well, let me say it here and now, I will not be driven off of this council like this council did to Jen Schottenoff. You're dealing with a different person here. I have the right to my opinions. I have the right to express myself. If you have an issue with me, at least put your name on it. If you don't have the courage to put your name on it and say who you are, passing it out and who's endorsing it, then I have the right to call you out and call you the coward and bullies that you are. So I hope, in the interest of unity and civility, that everybody that sits on the new council will abide by that and will call out all their friends and colleagues to encourage people to engage in our public discourse, whether we agree or disagree, but not to vilify somebody, not to character assassinate a person based on something that happened a year ago? Seriously? If I start doing that to all the people in the room, I think there'll be a lot of unhappy campers. Thank you for indulging me, and you have not heard the last from me.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Counsel Hernandez?
Thank you.
And we have three late files.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I'll be really quick. I just want to add that the people have a right to express themselves, and I know that through the Zoom, they have not only attacked Counselor Greeney, they've attacked as well Counselor Anderson Burgos, myself, and many others. And, I mean, it's very hard to control them, but when our citizens and constituents come forward in either impressance here at the chambers or through Zoom, and they have the rights to express themselves and to be able to, I mean, it's freedom of speech, like, I don't understand, there's a lot of things that are going to be said that we don't like, and we have to just, you know, I mean, rise to the occasion and either disagree with the person, but we can't be upset here and hold accountable our other colleagues and say, oh, you need to stick up for me, or call out your associates or the people that align with you because they have a right to express themselves here. So that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Mister President? Late file A. Late file A is a communication addressed to the mayor from the law department. It's at least five and a half, six pages, five and a half, six pages long. It appears to be an opinion to Mayor Garcia.
Ordinance.
As far as the employment of city councilors and the interpretation of ordinance and laws. Motion is received, refer to committee on ordinance. I think if everybody hasn't received a copy, we will get you a copy, but I believe this is part of some emails that I saw some, you know, today from the law department. But I'm guessing that Mayor Garcia requested the opinion and we got a copy of it. Any discussion? We can't discuss it because this is late filed. Sorry. We can only discuss going to committee unless we suspend the rules.
No, just ordinance.
Order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel Hernandez has a late filed. Real simple, it's a handicap sign, one thirty-six Beach Street. On a motion to refer to committee on ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Mr. President?
Counsel Lacy? We're in the late files section.
Yes, I know, but I did have my hand up for the previous discussion, and I know
Mr. President, just a point of order. Can we just get to late file C? I, I just, I just want to get to late file C, and then we can hear the counselor speak. That would be great. I'd love to hear it.
Late file C is a communication we all received from our assessor, Deborah Burnell. It just, it's a response to what I believe was discussed in DGR as far as billboards go and as far as how they're taxed.
So send, receive and send to DGR?
Yeah, yeah, receives.
If you see, if you see the, the copy to DGR to go with the billboards discussion that's going on there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel Lacy, we, I know we're all talking about Zoom stuff. It's important. We are bending rules, but go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that in the discussion of Zoom meetings, we covered a lot of different issues, and they're discreet and separate issues from one another. So like Zoom bombs and bullying would be at one end of the spectrum, and then other people coming in stating their opinions and calling forward the, the public record is sort of at the other end of the spectrum. So while, you know, we are all like working very hard to get back to what we call like the new normal, I do want to just state for the record that the Zoom bombs and bullying take on a different characteristic than the, the members of the public stating their opinions and calling forward public record. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I do appreciate it because Zoom has been wonderful in many ways because it helped us stay safe, but it also comes with challenges. We have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made second to adjourn. Let's not debate this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you to our newly elected councils, especially those who spent the extra mileage with us.